All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 17th, 2023 Austining Board of Education meeting. We will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, which I've asked our Superintendent, Ms. Fox Alter, to lead us in this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we are thrilled this evening to begin our board meeting with a very special recognition. We are excited to have Putnam Northern Westchester Boses here this evening to do a student of distinction. I guess like we take it away.
Right, so I this evening, first of all, I just had a wonderful conversation with our honoree and her family earlier tonight in between the AMD student is distinction. And I'm so thrilled this evening to have the leader of PNW Boses and a good friend and colleague of mine, Neil Boyle. I have to say, as I introduce Neil up here, when our honoree this evening won the award, Neil's secretary right now was my secretary back in the day. So she was super excited that an Austining student won, so we got that personal phone call. So Neil, welcome, welcome to our Board of Education tonight and to your staff and to this very special ceremony.
Thank you, Dr. Fox Alter, and thank you. On behalf of the Boses Board, we really appreciate this opportunity to come here tonight. This is a very special day for us. Just to give some context, it's not often we have an opportunity to do this. So if you look at all of our student counts, we're a little under 2,000, and we only do this twice a month for that many students. So there's 18 components, we hope to get 18 per year. So that just gives context to acknowledgements we have these opportunities. What makes this special is we always start with the student. So we know that the number one priority for these nights to occur is the hard effort from the students. The second layer is the great families we get to work with. So you can never say thank you enough to the families. We have students for 35 hours a week, they're at home the rest of the week. The third layer is having incredible staff at Boses, and you're going to have an opportunity to meet some of them, but also incredible board at Boses and in the school districts. This only functions when you allow students who may need an alternate setting to be successful to come to us. So we can't thank you enough for that, and we really look forward to having an opportunity to recognize a special person in a few moments. I'd like to introduce the Principal of Fox Meadow High School, Michael Colvin, to say a few words. Thank you.
So this here is, oh, it's a little loud, sorry. This is Nisa Montez, who is this evening's recognition recipient. Mom, grandma, and brother here, along with Mr. Hill, her clinician, over at Fox Meadow. So though Nisa's only been at Fox Meadow since September, she's quickly become a valuable member of the community. She's a diligent student with a kind heart and an open mind. She continues to amaze her teachers with her grit, perseverance, and strength. She's an active participant in class, engaging in lessons, offering insight, and unique perspectives to topics of interest while asking inquisitive, challenging questions. Ever the team player, she demonstrates a unique ability to motivate her peers to get going on those early mornings and to hang in a little longer during those double lab periods. She is not only hardworking and creative, but she always has a positive, kind, and uplifting word to share with classmates and staff. When a classmate is going through a tough time, Nisa can often be found offering friendship, words of comfort, and support. She'll often include personal experiences in these conversations, demonstrating a keen ability to guide peers in a positive, productive way that promotes progress and self-advocacy, huge for somebody of her age. She regularly conveys the importance of her family, welcome and thank you, and speaks with kindness and appreciation regarding how they are a constant pillar of support in her life. She truly personifies today's successful young woman. Her strong work ethic, her kindness, her passion have had a positive impact on the students and the staff at Fox Meadow. She stares adversity down and walks away with a smile on her face, also greeting us with a smile when she rolls in in the morning. And it is with great honor that we recognize Ms. Nisa Montez as our student of distinction. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. We are so proud to have you here tonight and get to wish you well and congratulate you in person. Very well deserved. Thank you for really putting the pride in, oh, pride. It's so lovely to see, so you should really be proud of yourself.
Great. Can we ask Nisa to come up and just put the medal around her neck in front of the local live so everyone can see?
Yes, let's do it.
Take a picture of Joe Tripp on the... Oh, wow, that is... I love it. Okay, yay! Congratulations. And we thank our representatives from Boses. For everyone who might not know, we use a lot of acronyms in education. Boses stands for the Board of Occupation Cooperative and Educational Services, and they allow us to share services and programs in many different and unique ways, and they are a valuable partner in all of our work. So thank you, Neil and the team. Congratulations to Nisa and her family.
Great. And I was just asking Nisa, we can clap, clap, clap. I was just asking Nisa what were some of her favorite, you know, things that she's studying over at Boses, and she mentioned woodworking was one of her favorites. So there are really quite an amazing variety of paths of study that our students can take there. And thank you to Trustee Schnecker, who has been a part of that board for a very long time. Thank you for serving and volunteering in that capacity. And I do believe that we are planning eventually, sort of once we get through budget season, to ask Boses to come and present to us, you don't know this yet, but I promise you, it's in the works. We're asking someone from Boses to come and present to us at a board meeting and sort of help us make this, like, really explain to us what it's about, explain to the public, and go through some of the pathways with us at a public meeting so that we can all be better understand and we can make sure that our community is connected and understands as well. So stay tuned for that, and thank you for being here this evening.
Okay, it's great. Thank you.
Congratulations. All right, we will continue on this evening with session 2.1, which is part of our work session. Our superintendent is going to give us an update on our facilities plan.
Okay, so before I start and invite Alida and Jared up here to join the conversation, I'm very excited this evening to open up my superintendent's update on facilities with a super special presentation that represents and celebrates three important things: energy efficiency and cost savings, sustainability and conservation, and STEM educational opportunities for our students. So this presentation tonight, this very special presentation that I'm going to ask, hand it over to Alida and Jared and Matt from, I'll take, and Matt from Amoresco, basically would not be possible if not for the leadership of our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Alida Zubar, and to our terrific Board of Education. Allow me to thank this board and to Alida and to Jared for an energy project that has not only $14 million of work at no cost to the taxpayer due to the EPC and wise use of federal stimulus fund. It upgrades close to 100 Univents, classroom vents, to modern ones that can heat and cool, adds heat pump technology and solar panel electricity. For those of you who have been past Brookside School, you see the solar panel canopies that can also do water harvesting in addition to solar energy collecting. Right? I want to thank Ms. Zubar for her comprehensive approach to that, the stewardship of Jared Mance and his team, and to the Austining Board of Education. It gives me great pleasure this evening to hand this special presentation, and she's right on time, to our Assistant Superintendent, Alida Zubar, and to Matt, also a colleague that I've had the pleasure of working with before, and to Jared. So take it away, team.
My timing is impeccable. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the Board of Education, Jared, for the many hours going back and forth with the Energy Performance Contract. This is our second one. And at this time, I'm pleased to announce that our person that we work with from Amoresco, Matt Ferdenia, is here to present the district with an exciting gift.
Okay, so, Board President.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matthew Ferdenia with Amoresco. Really excited to be here tonight. As a part of the EPC project, Amoresco takes great pride in presenting this check for $100,000 for a STEAM grant to, there you go, to the Austining Union's Union Free School District. This is a great opportunity to challenge students already involved in STEM program and encourage students that might not realize that could be a future in STEM for them. So again, very proud to be here. Thanks to the Board of Education, everyone, all the administration. It's a great honor to be here.
Can we do a picture of the whole board?
Absolutely.
You gotta hold the big check. I haven't held one yet. It's my lifetime. It's a whole...
I see it the way now.
All right, all right, everyone.
Absolutely. Yes.
Thank you. Absolutely. So there are a few names that I think it's important to mention with regards to the check, because it's really fun to hold a big check and to take the pictures, and I really enjoyed that. I don't know if you could tell. But I know that our business official, Alida Zubar, is really to be commended because she was, came and presented this at a board meeting, and we were like, yes, why wouldn't we do this? And I know that as a board, years in the past, we had looked at going green, and, you know, we had worked with Jared, and we were trying to figure out a way to do it, but the pieces just kind of weren't fitting together in a way that made financial sense for the district until Amoresco, and this happened, and we signed the EPC. So I do want to thank a couple of trust, three trustees who are not here with us on the board anymore that were a driver in this, that were trustee Erin Spring, trustee Lisa Redley, and trustee Greg Galiff, who were a big part of this as well. So thank you to them. Thank you to our former superintendent, Dr. Ray Sanchez, who was also a driver of this. And just congratulations, everyone. What a win.
Yeah. Thank you. So I'm going to ask for this part of us, it's a shared superintendent's update, so I'm going to ask Alida and Jared to join us here at the front table, have a seat, because we've been having conversations, which were better than, I think, people going back and forth from in front of the podium. Okay, all right, so let me get back to that. Okay, our, and purpose tonight is basically to give the Board of Education an update on all the different work that has been taking place, to do a deeper dive into two areas that the board had requested, as well as just an overview of some of the important work that's been taking place in terms of spreading communication, gaining feedback. Right, right. So again, our goals of this plan, this engagement and communication process, has been to make people aware of the process that this community, this board, has been engaged in since the year 2020. Also to outline Part One of the plan and work up to date. This Capital Facilities Improvement Plan doesn't just have a potential bond section to it, it also has a section that is devoted to working through using tools like what we celebrated tonight, the EPC, using district funds, using capital reserve funds. So there's a Part One to this plan, and we've been talking about it extensively. Included in this, we've, just for awareness for everybody, I'm going to turn it over to Alida in a moment. We also then outlined as part of the goals of this strategy right now has been to outline a Part Two of the plan, which is the work that will require funding through a bond, as well as the strategic use of the capital reserves and certain budget funds. And also, we've been trying to provide information, we had a lot of questions on this regarding financing that maximizes the significant impact of New York State aid to lower the local funding to approximately around 20% of this project. So Alida and Jared, if you want to just, the board, Illy, put on your seats an outline of a chart that includes a whole list of capital projects that we are calling has been listing as part of this project.
Do you mind double-clicking on the link?
Oh, sorry, yes, okay.
So I have Jared here with me today, tonight, because he's and his team have been very instrumental in this four-page document of projects that we've done over the past decade. Jared hasn't been with us for the past decade, but since he's been here, we've got so much accomplished within our budget, our transfer to capital line, the EPC, two EPCs, and also the bond, the first bond is listed here, as well, the 41.5 million. In total, those of you that have the document in front of you will see that over the past year, we were able, over the past 10 years plus, we were able to complete over $120 million worth of work with only one bond and two EPCs. We were also able to use grant funds, stimulus funds, to help make our spaces cold, particularly the high school, with grant funds, $4 million worth, and then the $14 million EPC, which will be completed over the summer. So I'm going to turn it over to Jared just to highlight some of the projects that we've been able to complete. There's been people who say that we're waiting too long to get things done. We have not been waiting. Unfortunately, we've been doing things as we go along in small but significant ways. But again, it comes to a point where we want to impact the students that are currently enrolled in the school district and not continuing to put off a larger capital project, which is very much needed. So again, I'm going to turn it over to Jared just to give the highlight of some of the things that we've done. You'll also see at the end of the document what we're proposing for the transfer to capital line for the 2425 budget.
So when you, when you look through this document, what jumps out at you is that we've done a combination of small and large projects. So some of the projects have been a little bit on the smaller side, where we're targeting things like, you know, interior painting, we're targeting things like a small renovation. But in addition to that, there's also, we've added classroom space over the last number of years in multiple buildings. We've done renovations of the offices here at AMD. We expanded the music space here at AMD, that was before my time here. The guidance renovations at the high school so that we could, we could have a more appropriate guidance offices. We've done improvements to the library at the high school. You also did the security addition, the security vestibule at the front of the high school shortly before I got here. And then since I'm here, we improved all of the security vestibules at all of the elementary schools so that, so, you know, so we have improved security there. Things like windows, we did, we did all the windows in the high school. Matter of fact, when I first took this job here at Austining, and it was explained to me that we were going to change all of the windows in the 1929 wing of the high school, and we're going to do it over the winter, I was like, okay. And, but it, we made it work. I guess this was one of the fortunate things of COVID. We had the shutdowns during COVID that, that winter, and it was full, full go because we had access to the building, so, and we could get it done quickly and efficiently. So I'm very proud of all of the things that are on this list since 2019, when I started here, but the work had, you know, I'm also familiar with a lot of the work that was done leading up to this, and it's, it is significant. Alida touched on what we're, what we're looking at doing in the transfer to capital line in the coming budget. So that's, I think those items are all listed on the last page. So that last page shows in the 2025, 2425 budget, we're going to be looking at HVAC improvements here at AMD, which is a significant appropriation of about $10 million to add air conditioning to classrooms at AMD. We're, we're in discussions with the architects, preliminary discussions about what that would look like and what route we're going to go there. So there's more to follow, more information to follow on that. We're looking at security upgrades, which are basically lockdown upgrades and lockdown system upgrades, and that will touch all the buildings, including 400, to improve the way we lock down the buildings and the methods and the hardware behind it. We're looking at new entrance doors in the gym side entrance at the high school. That's a kind of a maintenance item that, that is a maintenance item where the doors are wearing out. We also want to make some improvements for security there. And then the last item is upgraded fire alarm panel at Brookside, which is one of the last fire alarm panels in the district that have not been upgraded in the last 25. That one's probably about 25, 30 years old, and it's, it's reaching the end of its life. So anyway...
Jared, some of those security updates are also part of what was recommended from Alteris. You know, there are some things we can't share with the public because it's a security issue, but again, we're incorporating those, probably those high priority lists into, well, those that we can do through a capital reserve, we're incorporating those into our proposal for next year. Right.
Correct. And that also includes, thank you for that, and to remind me, that also includes improved notification devices and all the, especially the large area spaces, spaces like this space, gymnasiums, music classrooms, places like that, cafeterias, anywhere that's noisy where you have a lot of people in, it's hard to get those lockdown notifications out because sometimes people miss PA announcements. So there's audible and visual cues that were going into lockdown in those spaces.
Right, right. And we're looking to incorporate those into our VoIP system, which are computer-based as well, so it's not as simple as just, you know, running another set of wires for a blue light someplace. It really needs to tie into some of the building management and smart systems that already exist in the district. So the combination of conversations between Jared, Alida, Alteris have been very, very productive, and with, obviously, Mike Hannah and Technology have been really, really important, and things are aligning. You couldn't have those conversations, though, if this board, Alida, Jared, had not paid close attention to looking at the facilities to improve them along the way. And again, when you're doing that layer of work and you're into it the way Austining has been, you certainly get a clearer vision of future work because your eyes and ears are in the system and what you can do within a budget, and you get a clearer understanding of now, we're going to look at other things which we need to do that need funding from outside sources. Right.
And just to go back, I think the most pride that we have is that all of these projects, and I'll exclude the first bond, the 41.5 million bond, which is included in $128 million number, all of these projects were done with no increase to the tax levy. We've been able to, like I said, in 2012, when I first started, 2011, we started with a transfer to capital line of $675,000 for six buildings. They, there was some opportunity with the tax cap because capital work is excluded from the tax cap calculation, which allowed us to increase that transfer to capital line over time to $6.95 million. And as a result of that increase, we've been able to maintain that line without increasing the tax levy. So most of the, if not all, these projects were done with no increase to the tax levy, and we're very proud of that. We've been very fiscally responsible with EPCs. You'll recall, back in 2012, when we did the bond, we were able to pay for boilers, dual-fuel burning boilers with the EPC, at no cost to the taxpayers with savings. You'll recall back then, the oil that was going through the boilers, they were spending, maintenance, our maintenance mechanics were spending a great deal of time repairing the boilers because of the viscosity of the oil that was being used at the time. So we were able to change to more efficient dual-fuel boiling burners based on utilizing the EPC. And even with this upcoming EPC that's been installed and will be completed, like I said, over the summer, we're able to put air conditioning or cooling units within many of our schools at no additional cost to the taxpayer. So we've been very fiscally responsible in all the projects that we have done, but there comes a point, like I said, that we want to make sure that we addressing the needs of the students that are currently enrolled in the district. So we're taking steps to do that, and we're taking, Park School is going to be on board for the addition, starting in the spring, and then we're also working on Brookside and getting approval from SED for addition there. So the work continues, the capital plan continues, we won't stop, but even if we don't get the bond, we'll continue our work. And also, putting money aside with the two capital reserves we've had also has helped a great deal. So I just want to, again, thank Jared and his team. His team is remarkable. We have our own GC, and we have all of the trades. We have electrician, we have carpentry, we have plumbing, HVAC, and they're phenomenal. They're just phenomenal. So some of the work, he actually does in-house with his staff, and then some of the other work is done through other budget appropriations. The work that Jared has done with the staff is not even on these sheets. They're not on these sheets. This is only capital fund. So again, I wanted to thank Jared, and I want to thank the past, current, and future board for all of their support in helping to maintain that transfer to capital line to make large improvements to our school district.
Right. So I think, just to contextualize a little bit, Jared is working right now to replace close to 100 Univents that can heat and cool. I mean, you just think about the enormity of those numbers. A construction project at Park that will add, that will, the delta, the net will be three additional classrooms, replace of HVAC systems, elevator, really, really significant work, additional expanded cafeteria at Park, which everyone is excited about. So the district continues to look at their facilities to move forward. Just as an example, he's, he's going to be really annoyed at me because I did this in front of him at Park when he was presenting to them. I want to thank Jared, even just this weekend, it's just a symbol of how proactive he was. The weather forecast, as you all know, if you were driving on roads or highways, everyone was like broadcasting, we're having this terrible storm. Jared, I took the liberty, Jared... this terrible storm. Jared, I took the liberty, Jared, of just forwarding one of your communications to the board just so they could get a sample of what you were doing in terms of proactive thinking. And, you know, those kind of nights, I don't sleep. So, it was really great to know there was another partner not sleeping that night and had done a lot of work that, really, to help protect our facilities, our students, and, you know, really, really being mindful of the facilities and kids and the great work that takes place in them. So, Jared, thank you for that. And thank you for always wanting to talk to me about HVAC and all kinds of things like that because I do enjoy those conversations.
Thank you.
Right. This list will be linked to our website once Nicole works on opening up the facilities website. So, that information will be available to our community.
Right. Okay. So, again, on the same goal of like an engagement and communication plan, and again, obviously, we want to thank Nicole Reese, who's done outstanding job. We've had events and meetings to help talk about our path forward and improvement. We were at the November Explore and Learn, and Christine and Catherine were there as well. And there were a lot of people who dropped by. There was a continuous conversation about that. The board held an additional meeting in November based just on facilities. We've had school-specific faculty meetings. This week, Park and Brookside, I attended AMD, and I will continue with the other schools as we move into January. We've also had evening events. This week alone, Alita and I and Maria were at the AMD and OHS event last week, and Frank joined us at the one at Claremont. Although, we had a handful of people in person, like last night, Catherine, the one we, I think we had four or five people in person, but we had 57 people who joined us on Local Live. At the high school on Monday night, there were 41 people who joined us on Local Live. So, again, I'm glad people are tuning in, glad people are listening to the conversation. There is a community survey that's out. We're going to give another plug for that. It's open until December 19. And again, the Board of Education is looking forward to reading particularly all the comments and feedback that people have. I know the board is looking at an additional meeting in January to continue the conversation. And we will continue to review with Alita, our fiscal advisors, construction managers, the fiscal and risk mitigation strategies. So, based upon that and a meeting that we had with Rob and Roger, Alita came up with the idea of just having a virtual meeting, which we will record to go over those details. That will take place tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. And this is the Zoom link for it. But again, we'll record it so it's available for the community to see. The district has launched its official facilities website, which will be a place to, you know, archive all of this information and to update it in one easy spot. Right? The work with our consultants continues, of course. They updated the plan, as you heard Jared and Alita speak to this evening, to take the AMD HVAC and AC out of the Part II section, which has a funding through a potential bond, and move it into the first part of the plan, meaning that we were looking at adding it to district work for this upcoming school. But let me just click on it so you can see it. Here it is. Okay. All right. All right. So, Alita, you want to?
So, we've been having a lot of community members ask us about the details related to each project that's contained with the potential bond. So, again, the total amount is 256 million. And then, a portion of that amount of 10 million has been taken out, which was the AMD HVAC. Right now, it says that Roosevelt renovations will be done, but we're still reviewing that to determine whether or not what we can do with that space. So, it's in there as a placeholder for now. But again, it was just a swap between AMD because why wait to do that work? We can start that work now. And it's important, since we've been using our schools a lot more over the summer, and, you know, the months that are hotter, keep, or the days of the months that are hotter, keep going up.
Right. And again, to that point, I know it's a topic that Kim was happy to hear because we run quite a comprehensive extended school year program. We also do that summer school programs. We have a lot of community partners that want to help us. But the ability to get AC rooms is important over the summer.
So, if you turn to page two, or if you go down to page two in this document, you'll see a further breakdown of specifically when these projects are to be completed by projects within the 256 potential bond. So, in 2425, you'll see that there's a bunch of zeros there. That's because, again, that is going to be the AMD HVAC work that's coming through the 6.9 budget appropriations, as well as some of our capital reserves and some capital project closeouts. You'll see in 26 that there'll be work done at the high school, which includes the church. And you'll also see, actually, no, the church is in 2027. And then, in, further work will be done at the 78 building for 31 million, and then 12 million for further renovations to Brookside. And then, it goes on and on. So, the detail is here. And then, if you go further down in this document, this document was provided by our construction manager. And again, it's based on conceptual design. So, nothing is set in concrete. But this is something that we need to do in order to ask the voters for a certain dollar amount. So, all of the information and the way that the construction managers came up with the costs is listed here in this document. Tomorrow night, our construction managers will be at that meeting as well. I wanted to give a shout out to one of our community members who took me up on my offer to have a meeting about risk mitigation with this project. And so, that's one of the reasons why we're doing this as well. And I said to him, I'll just open it up to everybody because, you know, we're inviting our fiscal advisors, we're inviting our construction managers. So, if he has questions, I'm sure other people have questions as well. So, again, if you want more information about this document, it will be available on the website, and we will be going over it at the meeting tomorrow night at 6 o'clock.
It's open to the board, correct, as well?
Yeah.
Of course.
This is open.
And Roger, again, it came from requests from the board, too. So, great stuff.
Can we get, because whether, I'm not sure if I can attend so personally. So, are we able to get whatever documents you're going to present at that meeting, whether it's, you know, financial amortization tables? Can we get that ideally ahead of that meeting, if possible?
So, I did give you information last week, I think. The only thing that I didn't give you was the debt service graph.
Right.
And I'm still working on that to make sure that it's clear to everybody that looks at it. So, I'll be finalizing that tomorrow before the meeting so I can share that with you. But all the other documents that we'll be going over, the board has had and has tonight, and it will be on the website. And I'll make it available in a summary document as well.
Alita, I think what would also help for your case of all of the conversations that have been had so far would be to have what's falling off by way of debt service to what's coming on. Because the way that it can better be explained is when people kind of see where some things are coming off, the puts and takes that kind of happen in there. I just think it'll give a bigger picture of all of that.
And that's what we're working on with that graph. I just, I've had it for a little while. I've been going back and forth with fiscal advisors. I just need it to be easily understandable without somebody having to explain it. So, it'll be ready tomorrow.
Okay. And then, the other thing, just on that, is just the interest piece of it, too, because I think there's some portion that where interest will not be applied, and then, there's portions where interest will. Because this interest is not on the entire 256 per se, right? It's, there's portions of that which are. So, that's important. So, it's no one's, you know, going to misconstrue, misunderstand that. So, it's just to, you know, help you with your supporting information that you need to best explain that.
Yeah. So, the graph itself will show the interest.
Okay.
Payment and the principal payment in the graph. I think it's a lot of detail to go into what's aided, what's not aided. They look at it from a global perspective when we're doing the debt service schedule. But the principal and interest will be on that graph. So, you can see what the actual payment is, and then, how it's being paid with the different funding sources.
Is it okay to ask?
In a stacked column graph.
Thank you. Can I just ask a question about Roosevelt? Is that okay? For Roosevelt, I just want, just a point of clarity. That could be looked at more for renovation for, you know, if that's the direction we want to go in, for much more of other types of academic learning spaces.
Sure.
So, because what I'm thinking here is that there are needs throughout the district to, because of where the location of that building is, for other schools to use. So, if you're going to make any kind of adjustments or changes to that, it could be for academic learning spaces primarily. And if that's the case, then, then that changes the aidability formula for what we're looking to do at Roosevelt. I mean, administration spaces are one thing, but I'd like to put the kids first, you know, in terms of what we look at by way of the spaces. And that's not to say that, you know, that central office is not important. That's not the case at all. The case is that whatever space we can optimize for purposes of, I don't know, whatever it might be, whether it's, you know, robotics, or learning how to use a kitchen, or pre-K, because I know Head Start, I think you said that's not aidable. But pre-K is, right? So, whatever the things are that are potentially for the kids in the district right now, I'd like to really put as much of our firepower to that as possible when it comes to that Roosevelt building.
Like an alternative high school. Alita had a whole list, actually. She was brainstorming fast and furious over that. Right?
I think that's great because honestly, having that alternative, well, it's alternative programming, right?
That's the word, alternative program.
Which is great.
That kitchen is.
Industrial kitchen. Could we learn?
And I'm going to give a shout out to Ray because he did a grant to get a dishwasher that he'll never let us live down in the Roosevelt kitchen. And all of that equipment is brand new.
That's perfect.
And we were able to pay for it, except for the grant, with cafeteria funds. That could be a perfect space for a culinary program.
Oh, that would be awesome.
And then, the cafeteria itself is upgraded. And it's very nice looking, thanks to our B&amp;G staff. So, the gym itself downstairs is huge. And you can do engineering, you can do the robotics, you can do the drones.
At the height, at the height for the drones.
So, there's so much you can do. So, again, this is all conceptual at this point. And there's no changes that can be done to Roosevelt immediately anyway.
Right, right.
Because there's students there. So, if you look at this document, it's in 2029 when we're contemplating that.
Yeah.
The lease is up for 400 this year, so we have to extend the lease anyway. So, I'm having conversations with the landlord about that, and he promises to give me a number next week.
Okay. And I think it's a good thing from the brainstorming perspective. I think it's a good thing to have, especially if there's conversations around alternative pathways towards graduation. And this could be one of those enabling functions. But I really would like to see as giving opportunities in a broader way through the use of that facility for our kids to really take advantage of those alternative pathways to graduation.
I have to say, though, although Alita said she's working on a graph, having spent a good half hour yesterday looking at it with her and the financial consultants, it's making sure every data point on that represents the complexity in a visual way that people can understand. So, there was a lot of conversation about bar graphs, coloring on bar graphs, your X, Y axis, what are you including? Should we do part of it in a pie chart? The intention is to make it as easy for folks to try to understand because this is a rather complex process. So, looking forward to see what happens tomorrow night, Alita, on that. Right?
One last thing, and I promise I'll stop there. Maybe I won't promise. But the, there was a project that was done where the renovation out in AMD this year, where you renovated the parking lot. Is that part of this list of costs?
Yes.
Yeah, that's in there, yeah.
Okay.
It should be listed, it should be in there.
It is. Everything in there is from capital.
I only see like.
It'll be under 20, 22, I think.
Because it was done in 2023.
It's listed as outdoor fields on here, but that.
That was the parking lot, right?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's.
So, just so you know, the years on there is based on the budget, not when it was completed.
Yeah, that's based on budget year.
That's a distinction. Okay. All right. Thank you.
I just have a couple of quick things to build off, Roger. So, just a thought, if this document is now publicly out here, and it says, and Alita, as you noted, there's a swap, but it's still, you know, still TBD. It says Roosevelt District Administration renovations. Just a thought, just to be mindful, either A, take that word administration out, or add administration plus classroom TBD. And the reason right on that is, if I'm looking at that as a community, I'm like, wait, these guys are going to spend 10.2 plus interest to do an admin building? Just thinking of communications and understanding that we have flexibility on that. So, just something to point out. And just going back a second to something Roger had mentioned, this is wonderful that all this work has been done, and that there's more to come. The general question I've got is, in terms of solving for the space issues, prior to bond stuff getting done, do we have an idea, at least conceptually, especially in AMD and the high school, which we know there is, but that's going to be accounted for the bond, hopefully, if we adopt it and pass it. But that's not going to happen to 27, 28. Is there anything in the works right now, today, that literally, starting next year, or '25, that we are looking to solve for space for essentially today before the bond stuff comes online?
Yes. Rather complicated at that level. The first part is actually the easier part. It's actually, Alita, in terms of talking to our landlord about the lease at 400, about adding more office space there, and taking a look at any folks that might have offices here in this building and at OHS. Is there a place for, that we could move some of that over there? That, you know, people that might be involved, but not as directly with others. So, that's the first tier of that. That was actually an in-basket question we asked everybody last week in the instructional cabinet. So, that's going to be one of them. The next piece will be taking a look at really diving down. Are there other options for alternative programming? Can we maximize WCC down at Acadia Shopping Plaza? These are, there's a list of things that we are looking at, Rob, to your question. Yes.
That's great. Because again, for, to build goodwill, but also to show, to your point that, Alita, you said, we're not just like sitting waiting, okay, bond passes, and we're just going to wait for five years, twiddling our thumbs. I think it's really important to, and you might have already articulated that, admittedly, I didn't go to yesterday's meeting or the other meetings. So, you might be articulating, you might be taking that as a question. But I think that's a real key talking point to say, while we wait for this and hopefully get this, we're still going to do this other stuff. So, someone who has to do a speech pathology in the hallway right now, now, we're looking to do, fix that prior to '27, '28, and that you're doing all the things you mentioned.
We're trying. Again, I will say, you know, it will help to a small amount to help mitigate. I absolutely believe that in a place where you've got 100% room utilization, this building, and then, 100 plus 107 over at OHS, having air-conditioned spaces actually really helps, too, because, you know, it makes the places that are 100% used, you know, nicer, more livable, more comfortable spaces for that. But yeah, this will become a challenge. You know, do you alternately, do you not run globally classes that are small and rolled? You might be up to a challenge about that because of kids that might need it as a capstone, meaning a graduation thing. Do you choose to do things alternately each year, not? So, again, in this building and at OHS, the first lift, the first touch will be thinking, are there places people can go to, particularly over at 400, to utilize? That will be helpful. The next stage will be taking a look at what kind of offerings are held in all those spaces, and taking a look at the master schedule building algorithm to see how do we work on those, and see if there are other community partners and other programs we can do.
Great, great. And Jared, this might be for you. This is sort of a finance-y question because, again, I don't know if I'll be able to attend tomorrow. Looking at all this, and Alita taking notes on what you had mentioned, like, if you look from 2012 to now, there's the budget appropriation, right? That relates to potential capital line, right? And as it. And as, Alita, as you noted, you, that was, you know, you got that up to a, a nice number. My understanding is, right, for the bond, unless something has changed, the capital line would be, once we get going on this, is 1.5 million all the way out. Now, I know you can refill that, you, you can refill it, but Jared, I guess the question is for you, this, looking at this over the last 10 years, this is way more than 1.5 million per year over 10 years. It's way over that, as Alita, you indicated. So Jared, do you, I mean, are you comfortable with a 1.5 million looking 10 years out, that that will cover us for a roof, a track replacement, et cetera, et cetera? Do you, because again, this is way more than 1.5 million in 10 years. We'll be way point, 1.5 million for many years beyond that.
I think I calculated it's about 3 million over, approximately, 30 million over 10 years, so approximately 3 million a year. If you remove out the bonds and the EPCs and, and the other, and if you remove out, for example, I remove the classroom renovation projects, presumably because we'd be, we've done that, right? And we'd be doing all of that.
Right.
With the bond.
Right. And even of the 6.9 million that's been in the budget over the last couple of years, a, a number of years, we've done additions. We did an addition at Claremont, we did an addition at Brookside, we did the renovation of the guidance suite, and I, there's some others that I'm, that I'm not recalling off the top of my head.
That was all self-funded. That was all self-funded.
Yeah, those, those projects were all self-funded, in transfer of capital out of the budget. So that's out of that 6.9 allocation each year. You know, in addition to other repairs and things like that. So that's something that we're constantly looking at and managing, and that's reflected in that spreadsheet. Exactly that management piece is reflected in that spreadsheet. I think that's why Alita wanted to share that with you and with the public.
And I just wanna know, even in 24, 25, $900,000 is outside of the HVAC work that's focused on security upgrades, entrance doors, and the fire alarm system and panel. And the other thing to remember, the, the good thing about the capital line, it's a one-time expense that keeps giving and giving and giving. It's not a recurring expense that has to continually be added upon in, in, in subsequent years. So just say if we have a reduction in another line going forward for whatever reason, then that can be applied to the capital line. And then it's maintained there in the budget for years to come. We had a conversation about what was a number that we felt comfortable with, and he said, I think we can do 1.5. And if any indication, as an example, next year, 24, 25, he's spending $900,000. I didn't tell him he had to spend less. He, he prioritized. He comes up with a plan. I asked him what he needs, and if there's any year that we feel that something has to get done, then we're gonna shift things and make it work. There's, there's not going to be any, any time that me and him is gonna let something drop because we only budgeted 1.5 million. The other thing to remember is that our second capital reserve is up to $50 million. So right now, there's 5 million in there, or 5 to 7 million. So we're not depleting all of our capital reserves.
Right.
We're still gonna have money, as we have in previous years, not this past year, some fund balance set aside. So we can utilize that as well. We're utilizing that for the 10 million for HVAC upcoming, as well as closing some capital projects out in this school year. So I understand the conversation around, you know, really dropping that line. I get it, because I, it's very, I thought it was very important to increase it. But there's, there's not under our watch will there be us sitting here saying, we only have 1.5 billion dollars and we can't take care of something. And a lot of this stuff is not recurring, like President Crossling said. It's already been done, it's not gonna be done again.
I think it's important to remember, too, that the board engages once every five years in a building condition survey. So you have a tool that helps forecast things like end-of-year life, certain stages of things that they use. Jared uses that to help inform decision-making that he does. So again, it's, it's not done in a vacuum. You've got a lot of new systems that have end-of-life dates and markers associated with them. All of those things are tagged together to come up with that amount of money.
Can I, I'd be interested in seeing some sort of projection like that, like maybe for the next 10 years. I don't know how my fellow trustees feel about that. If it's, you tell me if like, that's not possible.
So we don't, the building condition survey is done, right?
It's, it's not, it's not complete, complete yet, but you'll, you'll be seeing it soon. The architects are putting the finishing, finishing touches on their report.
So that's, that's a NICEid required report, and it's every five years?
Five years.
And it goes out for five years?
Yes.
Yeah, so we can have a document to share with you that shows what is coming to its end of life, and things that they are recommending that needs to be done over a five-year period. I don't think we can do 10 years, and, and I don't think that there's numbers, budget numbers associated with that in that report.
They, they, they do assign cost estimates, but what they don't, what they don't do is they use today's dollars. So you have to factor in escalation costs, whereas when ARRIS, when our construction manager has put, put together a document like this, as he puts this plan together, he's incorporating escalation costs as he projects out to year two, three, four, and five.
Sorry, can you explain that?
The BCS doesn't do that. It looks at today's dollars.
Can you explain, just for the sake of, as we're, this is the meeting and the public, what the escalation costs are and some of these other buckets of costs that come into play? There's escalation, obviously contingency, soft costs.
Like, we've accounted for inflation, for example, when we're projecting these, these prices out.
Correct, correct.
Just give us like the gist of that.
Correct. So, yeah. So he's, so when, when the construction manager looks at costs for things, he computes them on today's dollar, right? Then he looks at the plan as to when we can build a given aspect of this project, right? So then he looks out two, three, four, and five years, this, that this bond is gonna take place over, and adds the escalation for each year, the estimated escalation, so that, that way the costs are realistic. So then when we actually get to year three, we have the money there to be able to, to, to do what we said we were gonna do in year three.
And that accounts for price inflation, correct? In the, in the escalation, and, and the, what happens if a cost of a material goes up for that, right?
Contingency, yes.
Correct. Well, contingency is another line by itself.
Contingency is in here. So there's escalation.
Right, so there are two lines, right?
Mm-hmm. Escalation, contingency, soft costs.
Yeah.
And...
Fixtures.
FFE, furniture fixtures and equipment.
So just from layperson's terms, I just understand, just go and bring this full circle. Both of you are confident that the 1.5 number there, with that 50 million, with other funding, you feel confident that that's a, a number, and, and, you know, to Catherine's point, you know, maybe there's a projection of five-year out, and maybe a roof, a track is gonna come due, and that we wouldn't, you know, you, you know, God forbid worse scenario, you get, we need two roofs in a year. That's probably gonna be more than 1.5. With that, then, are you able to pull based on the way you budget otherwise? Or basically, we would need to go to the community and say, hey, community, we, we were very conservative, but, you know, sometimes, you know, acts of God, things happen, we're gonna need to account for that, and ask the community to be a, a tax increase to do that. I guess that's what I'm trying, that's the gist of the question, that the 1.5 plus whatever else we've got budgeted, plus the contingencies, plus the escalation, we should be able to cover this without having to go to the community to ask for it over the next many years as, as we're bonded out.
Jared, I think, right, when you think about roofs, I mean, I don't get into the granularity of it, but a flat roof, you know, failure of a flat roof to that level would involve an awful lot of pieces, including the substructure, the insulation, the support structures underneath it. Pretty sure these are EPDM roofs that are sealed on a regular basis and tested all the time. So I think, the point being is that, yes, and this is a scenario where you have something castor struck, but, you know, what is the probability factor of that happening when you have roof structures that are inspected and built like this and taken care of this way? So it's trying to, you wanna mitigate risk as much as possible for something as significant as what you said. And you've upgraded, the other big thing would be boilers, et cetera, or, you know, tinsel weight on some things. But I, those, the, the building condition survey, because it's done by architects and engineers, does give a heads up on some of maybe what they might see, something systemic or something really important that you need to go, hey, you better pay attention to this, right? Water issues, drainage issues, something that would be different, right?
What's figured in here for the, for, you know, with the traffic studies? We have dueling traffic studies, the, with the 9A, sorry, Route 9 diet, and then the 9A, is that factored into what might affect the numbers here for 7, 8? That's something, you know, we should probably...
So we have, yeah, we have a separate slide, two slides in this presentation tonight that we updated just this afternoon from our architects about, you know, the Venn diagram between the road diet study and the district's traffic study.
Yeah, so there's the 9A traffic study as well that affects Stormy Town Road.
Right. So that whole piece there, right?
And I don't, I don't wanna stifle any kind of questions, I think it's a really good dialogue, but I get the sense that this is only the start of the presentation.
Yeah, it's not that long. I did figure it out.
Okay. And I wanna make sure that we have all trustees are able to ask their questions and clarifications.
Okay. So not too much more, and Alita can, you can jump in, okay? So again, we were, the, the traffic study, we will get the preliminary report next week. We found that out this afternoon from our architects. However, the scope of the work will now include the Village of Austin Road Diet Study. Their preliminary findings, that work is still ongoing. In addition to this, and based upon the November meeting, are here with the, and some village officials were here, there's a collaboration with the village, and there's a meeting now on January 9th with Jared, Alita, me, with our traffic consultants and the Village of Austin Traffic Consultants to review together. So that level of collaboration is important. And just as some broad strokes about what's taking place with the village, they commissioned this road study diet in 2021. The proposed configuration is to have one-lane direction, which we all know. The village received federal funds to implement this on Route 9, and construction is expected in 2025. However, the full scope of this project is unknown at this time. The scope of the school traffic impact study is to evaluate the existing conditions and now the proposed future conditions inclusive of this road diet, and then compare them to each other, which I think is important. And then the school will model the proposed school expansion, which addresses your question, Roger, on the existing road network, but it will also model the proposed school expansion with the road configuration diet, okay? And then they can compare for the board to have information. So the other piece associated with this was trying to, there have been multiple conversations with folks, trying to speak about how capital improvement work and debt service work when you calculate the annual tax cap calculation. And Alita, I think this was many times explained by you recently to folks, and also by our fiscal advisors.
So when you look at that chart that I'll be preparing for tomorrow's meeting, you will see that there is debt coming off, current debt. However, if you take, and you don't fill that gap, you don't fill that void, what happens is the tax levy limit amount goes down. You cannot apply the capital expense to recurring expenses like staff or programming. That's, that, that's not excluded from the tax cap calculation. So as a result, you either have to have more revenue coming from somewhere else, or you have to reduce the expense based on the amount of the capital coming off. So 1% represents $1 million, approximately a little bit more, of the tax levy amount. So it's not as simple as, you know, seeing that as an opportunity to add teachers. You cannot do that.
Right.
Not with the tax cap calculation. The only thing that will happen is that your tax cap amount, the amount that you can levy, will go down.
Right. So I think, Alita, correctly, our, our financial advisors actually have on their website, they advise school districts not to do this because of this consequence of life under the tax cap levy. And I think, I'm looking over at Frank, because I think we spent probably 10 years ago in a West Putt meetings trying to explain to folks about this negative impact that can happen. Globally, I would like to, you know, I think the state recognized that keeping your facilities in good shape and going into debt, kinda like we take out a mortgage on our house, that, or when you do capital renovations in your house and you live on it for more than two years, you don't pay taxes on it. So they looked at it with that same framework. You're allowed to deduct the interest of your mortgage off your taxes. They exclude the capital, they exclude the debt from your calculation of the tax lev- levy. And if you do transfer it in this way, you will have a negative tax cap. It, it has a really negative impact on your ability to fund ongoing programs. So they recognize good debt and, and don't hold it against a school district when they're calculating the tax cap levy. So we'll make sure, I'll make sure, we asked Andrew from Fiscal Advisors to, you know, just put together a whole packet of articles and calculations and financial advisors' reports for the board to review.
And I think that was discussed recently at a West Putt School Board Association meeting, which I think was attended by Melissa and Christine. And I'm sure they'll enlighten us more in board dialogue later.
So that's our update for this evening.
So, go ahead, yeah. Anyone wants to jump in?
Um, just to be clear, can we go back to the traffic study slide?
Yep.
Because I just wanna see, I know Roger had asked about the 9A, like, whether or not 9, 9A was included?
No.
Or maybe they've determined that it's not that relevant, I don't even know.
No, it's not.
So it's just not, is it, is that, just because they're at a different point in their kind of process there?
This was directly from our consultants. Hold on, let me bring it up here. Okay. And so it basically, the Village of Austin commissioned a road diet for US Route, not Route 9 in 2021. I guess the point being is that traffic will be diverted to 9A, because folks won't be using 9.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you. And just in case, I don't know, this is not part of this, but I felt like, I almost emailed everybody, because I received a note from our neighbor, because I live off of Van Cortlandt, that the property connected to the Cablevision. If you, on your way home tonight, when you drive down the hill, you'll see a little sign where that kind of vacant parking lot area is, they're, they're planning on potentially building 11 townhomes there. So I'm sure that that's too early in the process. There's a, a village meeting about that coming up. The, like, public notice sign just went up there. You'll notice it, because you'll drive right into it on your way down the hill, with 21 parking spaces. So, there's no way, I'm sure that that's incorporated into this, but it's just another, like, little piece of information to keep in the back of your head there.
Just on the traffic study, though, just to clarify, did our consultants either say what's happening with 9A, and I don't know if everyone here knows, but basically, and I can...
9, right.
Well, I'm talking 9A. We've got, we've got 9 in the diet, that's included. But the state DOT is redoing 9A completely proposed, right? There was a meeting in Briar Cliff, I know that Feldman was here. So they are taking out, according to, there's a website, the proposal is, they're taking out all the lights, they're redoing all the bridges, and redoing overpasses. Stormy Town will become, according to this, an overpass, not that, and there's gonna be service roads, I believe, on both sides. So personal opinion here, speaking as one, but wondering with the other trustees, this thing probably needs to be included and looked at as part of this, because you got the 9 diet, that's local and state, and then you've got 9A is gonna be completely redone if this goes through as is. The net is, Stormy Town, there's work being done on Stormy Town. Overpass, service road, so feels like we gotta, this is hard, because it's at very early stages, get it, but I think we gotta get into the crystal ball and say, okay, what does this mean if this all happens as part of the traffic study? Understanding that they're very early stage, and the diet's even farther around.
I guess there'll be more to discuss when we actually receive the traffic study.
Yeah.
I wanna make sure my trustees across the aisle have an opportunity to have any clarification questions. questions asked and answered.
Thank you, I appreciate the time. I want to reiterate a point that was made earlier that I think is just so important, that buildings and grounds in Austin mean something very different than it does in the rest of the world. And this is really a credit to Jared and his staff and Alita, your staff and lots of names that I'm leaving out, but this is not common. This does not happen in a lot of districts. We are doing active, we're not just taking care of buildings, we are modifying buildings. We're doing work, there's work on, maybe on, I know there's work on this list and other lists of things done by staff that has been able to get us things done in the right timeframe, in some cases get it done without additional cost to the district. So there's tremendous cost savings and the ability to not disrupt students during the school year, which is really, really well, so well received, but really appreciated. And just hope that you and your staff recognize that because.
Thank you for that, and I'll pass that along to the guys in the shop. Because they, they're the ones doing the work every day and we're proud of what they do.
Very proud of what they do. I think for the, one thing to note as we're looking down this list, and I just rattled through a bunch of them, but there's lots of items on this list that have not been, that we're dealing with original problems from the district. And I'll take the glass example because I was 40 years ago or wherever, close to 40 years ago when I was in high school and that glass was put in, it wasn't replaced and it was basically, at that time, it was already, you couldn't see through at the time. So this, these are projects that have been waiting for a very long time in some instances, like the bathrooms at Roosevelt probably were original at the end of the day.
They were, they were.
So, so some of, a lot of this work, there'll be things on here, security entrances and changing those, you're probably not touching those for the next 20 to 30 years and some of it, some of this you will, but, but a good amount of it you probably won't. So I think it's just something to, to note in this. I think, Mary, your points on the tax cap are 100% correct. And I think the thing I'll say, my lens on this is, is there is not probably a single business official in the state that will say, let your retiring, let your existing capital line roll off the books because it's going to have an adverse effect on your budget. And there's a few ways of looking at it to say it's a shortcoming of the tax cap, but maybe it's more of an incentive for the buildings. And you know, the, the conversations we had at the time, Mary, and with others was really is that that's what the plan was, is so that people maintain this at the end of the day. So I think anybody that thinks it's a good idea to let your capital line get, you know, come off the, a school district budget with the law as it is today, I think is crazy. My two cents, I think it's crazy because you are just going to go into the funds that you have for your recurring funds, which have nothing to do with the capital that you need and you won't be able to sustain your program. So not to say that that's what we're talking about here, but I certainly would be against trying to do anything with the capital line in terms of bringing it down or letting it come off because that has a very adverse effect until legislation was changed or there was a reason not to do work. I hear the points on the road diet and I think that's, it's, there's a, it's a, it's a complicated one, right? There was, you know, go back and look up the Hudson River Expressway, which was supposed to go right through the, the center of basically the Hunter Hamilton Block, go out the river and it was going to run all the way up and the state was coming in and doing it. And, you know, that was a project that got halted after a lot of pushback. I think a project of this scale where you're talking about overpasses and takeaways and all of this, the amount of construction and probably some eminent domain things that are going to need to happen to do that are going to make that a really long process. I would just caution us to, to look at it and not be aware of what's going on or even make considerations because I, I take the park example, like we're adding extension onto park, we're building on top of a building because we planned for that. There's spaces in this district where we can't put second levels on districts because we didn't think of it at the time, right? And we can't put it, so there's a tremendous cost savings. There's probably $2 million right off the bat, not sticking a shovel in the ground to put that up. So the road diet piece, we got to think about it, but we can't, it doesn't change the needs of what's in the building right now. And if anything, it's supposed to be making the flow better wherever they come to and land to in this whole thing, and there's going to be lots of debate around it. So I just would caution us to think that we're going to be able to figure out something that probably is going to take a bunch of years from the state to figure out and then the community to weigh in on and people to decide how they want their properties, either adjusted or not, to make this plan happen. So we just don't have, in my opinion, we don't have the time to sit back and let that drive this process. We should be cognizant of it, we should work it, but, you know, we need to move things forward here. It doesn't change the needs of what's in the building, so. But I think the points is an excellent one and we can't be putting our head in the ground and not knowing what's going on with the rest of it because it's really important. But balance, I guess, is the thing that we're always trying to find and strike and that's not easy, so, but appreciate the comments.
Annie and Melissa, do you have anything?
No, as today, just thank you for all the work that's going into this and making sure that the community is, you know, along for the ride to understand, you know, each step of the way, just in, even in lane in turn, so thank you for all the hard work.
I do, I have a couple of comments. I do, I kind of, I really do want to echo what Frank said. Listen, the traffic study is hugely important to this, right? Whether or not we can accommodate another grade in this particular area and in this neighborhood. And I'm very, I know all of us are very sensitive to the worries, the very real worries of the residents that are here in this Van Cortlandt and Murray Lane area right now. I do really understand that and I understand that they're not satisfied with how things are right now. And I understand that when you take already not being satisfied and then you propose adding all of these, you know, hundreds of additional kids, the, the sensitivity is real, right? And so I think that's why we are not, at least I'm not prepared to sort of do a formal vote on, on this proposal until we can dig into that traffic study. That being said, the, it seems to me the folks that are coming into this area have a very specific purpose of being here. They either live here, or you're coming here to work, or they're dropping their kids off and then they're leaving. So I don't see the road diet or the reconfiguration of Route 9A impacting the needs of the folks who are coming into this neighborhood. It's, it's not a pass through, it doesn't have commerce and it, you know, whether or not, first of all, there's not a light at Stormy Town now, right? So making it into an overpass and changing that, I'm not sure that that would increase any kind of traffic burden. The people who are taking Stormy Town are the people who need to be over here for a very specific reason. I don't see a configuration of the road changing that reason. I think it absolutely is something to be mindful, definitely want to say that we considered it. For me, I'd be, I'd be hard pressed to think that it's, it's really going to change, it's not going to change what we need to do here. And I don't necessarily feel as though it's going to change traffic patterns. If anything, lobbying for the smart light right down at the end of Van Cortlandt has the potential to significantly change traffic patterns immediately, independent of whatever else is going on. And that is, you know, something that I'm hoping we can focus our attention on. Okay, so there's my piece on that. I did want to just confirm, when we went to the 675,000 to the 6.9 million, I don't know whatever year that was, and then it's been sustained, like that initial jump, did, that was funded through taxpayers? Okay, all right, just wanted to clarify where that, that came from rather than being like stuff shifted around. And then I do want to make my position known. I understand the reconfiguring and the proposal to shift stuff around and do some work more immediately at AMD and I certainly support that and it makes sense. I'm not in favor of going out and asking for any sort of increase in the proposed levy that we've already put out into the community at this point. And I just wanted to make that position clear. However, we can reconfigure it, not granular for me to get into really, but I just want to make that position known. And then the last thing, I think you answered my questions about this list and the projects and I'm looking forward to seeing the five years. It's not that I don't, I want to make it clear, the hard work that's gone into this is amazing and I have full, full confidence in, full review and the team here that's working on this. And when you say like 1.5 each year plus like whatever is going to be left over the capital line of 5 million and we do have some other things in reserves and I'm sure we can move around, you tell me that, that we're good with that. I just want you to know that I accept that, but I do have to do the due diligence publicly so that the community can see when we're asking for such a big amount of money, that we've gotten more granular than we otherwise would. So I hope you don't take offense to me asking for that and that's the reasoning behind that. And then let me see. You know, I don't, tonight seems like as good a night as any to, to bring this up. And, and this is not necessarily indicative of my personal opinion on, on this entire proposal. If, you know, but I can sort of see a hypothetical, like, you know, Plan A, we come out, we ask the community to support this, like what if it, it doesn't get voted down? And what if a Plan B was where we didn't have to levy money from the community? Do we have, you know, looking at this, this schedule of master plan bond projects, do we have a prioritization of some big ticket items that, you know, if we had to put things off as not part of this master bond project, like where those things would fall? Is that something that, an exercise that the board should engage in? Is that something that the Facilities Advisory Committee may be engaged in? And it's okay if the answer is not tonight, I'm just kind of throwing that out there because I think that's another one of these things that in terms of prioritization, it might be important for folks to see that, that we're engaging in that process.
I, I think at the end of the day, it's, we can certainly ask our, we've asked, actually, Alita has asked, but it comes down to this, the scope of the project and the type of the work and the impact on state aid. So it's not as simple as a net, let's reduce it by X number because, you know, the new building gets aided at a different way than some, than a renovation. So it's, I wish it were simpler than that, but, but it's not because like a $20 million reduction might only end up in pennies.
Right. No, I understand that. And, you know, case in point, I think we had asked you, give us the analysis if we were to not do the, some of the athletic renovations.
Right, right, amounted to $10 million.
Right, over here in this campus area and seemed like a large chunk of money at the time of $10 million, but the way that everything fell out, it actually ended up being like 13, 13 cents out of.
A thousand, 13 cents value of a house each year.
You know, the, the savings that I think you would think that you began just weren't there, right? So I, I do, I do appreciate that. I really, I think I'm sort of just thinking out loud at this point and I know that we have this meeting and then we have, I think we're looking at a meeting in January, so sort of felt like the time to think out loud might be now.
Jared, thank you very much for everything and Alita, thank you, you guys put in quite a lot of work into this, so thank you.
Thank you. I just want to understand this chart. So if it says a number in 2027 for a project, and I know you have this other colorful schedule chart, does that mean occupancy and is it staggered? So if the church building is done in 2027, but the music wing and the commons are not to 2028, can the church be used as of 2027 project completion or does it all have to wait building by building to get in there?
I'm going to leave that to.
Yeah, I would defer to Paul on that and, and that's a good question to ask. He'll be at tomorrow night's, yeah, and because he laid that all out and, and he knows the detail better than I do.
Okay, thank you. And just, you know, back to Frank and I have no other questions for you guys, I think, but just to clarify then my position on the traffic piece. I'm, I guess, I guess I'm going on record. I'm not saying wait for DOT to get whatever they're going to do, which could be a year, five, 10, and now we just sit there, we got to wait for them. My point was, yes, we should consider it, say Catherine, to your point, we did our due diligence, even again, we have to do a little crystal balling and say, well, if they do this and it's being worked on the same time the new AMD 78 building is being done, this could mean X worst case scenario. I do think if there's value there to game that out a bit from a due diligence standpoint plus the road diet, but I'm not saying, yeah, let's just wait 10 years till they got, you know, this approved and we're not going to do anything before then.
Yeah, no, and I, I wasn't trying to say, say that at all. I mean, look, my outsider's opinion on this thing, that smart light at the bottom of Van Cortlandt should have been done, like we, there's one in front of Sleepy Hollow Country Club, why don't we have a smart light at one of the most traffic spots in the middle of the village? Like I just think if there's advocacy that this board wants to engage in, I certainly would push to do that because it makes a lot of sense.
I have, I have a question about that, that maybe, Mary, maybe you know, I don't, or I don't know, about that traffic light situation because there is a smart light, but then the only way to, you know, we all, as we all know, there's only really one lane and if you're going to take a left when traffic is at its highest, it is also the only point in time when pedestrians can cross, so most of the light ends up being taken by children crossing. If that, in the same way that they have at 133 and 9, a pedestrian only time period to give just the, just let the kids walk across and, you know, would that be like, could that be part of a smart light thing? Could that be something?
It seems to me a common sense part of it, but that's just me speaking.
You know what I mean? Because what ends up happening is, you know, there's only like three cars drive, you know, can, can leave because obviously the pedestrians get the right of way.
Can't there just be like a button?
Well, they, like most traffic lights, like the pedestrians cross with the traffic, so the kids are crossing 9 at the same time that all of the traffic is trying to take a, much of the traffic takes left there and then they end up, because there's not even a way to turn right, you got, everybody who's turning right is also stuck behind the people turning left because there's only one lane. We all end up waiting for kids to cross. There are many of them, right? And then only a few cars can actually drive through the light when the light cycle is going, but at 133, there is a point in time in the light cycle when all of the traffic has a red light anyways and the pedestrians can just walk where they need to walk.
The reason I ask is because I hate that light for that reason, because no one is trying to walk, like there are no pedestrians and it still cycles through it.
I know, but I mean, this is very predictable foot traffic, right? Like it's, maybe during the hours where you can't take a right on red up the hill anyways because, which I, is 7 to 9 and 2 to 4 every day, you can't take a, a right on red there to, to.
My question is just like, can we have a button, like, you know, one of the posts with a button?
There's a button there.
There's a button, does it not do anything?
No, it works, kids cross.
I think there's a lot of potential solutions. I think what I'm trying to say is we should probably talk to Assemblywoman Dana Levinberg and ask for the state DOT to come in and do that analysis for us. And I would recommend that the board send a letter to Assemblywoman Levinberg's office asking for that and that probably would be a good starting part. I'm not saying that she's responsible for this and, you know, but she's a good starting point for this and so.
I think we should action that, I think we should action that sooner than later.
I agree. And I agree with your points earlier Frank about not getting hung up on, you know, we just can't get hung up on plans that are going to maybe take place so far out in the future and kind of cut off our noses to spite our face when it comes to making the changes that need to happen.
Yeah, and we got to be aware of it, but it's such a big, it's such a big effort. They've got a lot to do to get any of those proposals.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, we know the intent of that, that plan is to alleviate traffic, not to create more, so hopefully if anything it would help, but yeah, I just, I, I agree with you on that point.
I, I mean, I agree with you as well Frank, but I think there's one thing that I would say, just similar to what Rob was saying before. What I'd like to think about is as we plan forward on that in terms of, you know, looking forward to, you know, one, access to fire trucks and EMT to get to our kids, God forbid there's a problem. And making sure if that, if there is ever a future overpass, underpass, wherever they, however they build it, according to what they're sketching out right now, do we have sufficient ability? Because I don't know right now if that's going to be through Van Cortlandt or it's going to be through the parking lot that's, that runs alongside AMD. What does that mean in terms of passability, particularly if there's a problem in the morning at the point of bus drop off, for whatever reason, in whatever situation? So that, it's just kind of like plan a little bit for that, just look at that, not say that, hey, all right, well, if this happens, whatever, just if we think about that, you know, we don't want to be, you know, at 2029 be like, oh crap, we didn't think about that, right? Because we didn't. But we have the, we have some idea that these are the things happening. If 9A was not happening at all, there was no discussion about that, there was no study about that, that would be, it would be moot, right? So it's just a matter of, we have these variables that are there, not to stop anything, but rather say. rather say, let's think about the entry points just so that our kids get the emergency help, and at the same time, help, think about this traffic pattern at that point, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I mean, look, my, opening up access somewhere on Stormy Town achieves a goal that I think is really important for the district to basically get those vehicles in, however they come. I mean, you know, independent O's is gonna come that direction and come across that, whether they're coming through and cutting across 9A today, or whether they're going through an overpass. But if we don't put an entry out to Stormy Town, there's no access there.
Oh, we need one.
We have, we have to do that.
We have to.
And so, and whatever entrance we put there has to be wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles, and that'll be a huge change for the district in terms of having that access that doesn't exist today, right? And I think that's the point of, like, what we're all saying here is, is like, that's part of the big impetus of this. We know if there's a big backlog on Van Cortlandt, there's problems.
And for the access point, I agree with you, the access point does need to be there. It's just the width of how, what we're gonna do in terms of passability of things at any given point in time. Thinking about just from the parameters of within our buildings here, of what needs to pass, from what point.
Totally, totally. It's kind of like when we were, we were talking about doing the canopies, right, at the high school for the solar, and we were worried about the fire trucks being able to go underneath it. You don't want to do something that fixes one problem but creates another, right? So totally, totally respect that.
Yep.
And Christine, I just want you to know that I would prioritize the safety of the children walking.
Of course, I would never think otherwise, and I think, you know.
So you need to be at the meeting where the state's having the open conversation about that, because that's a really important point that.
Right.
Needs to be taken. And I'm not sure on its own that that happens, so just keep that in your back pocket.
And I think, you know, what we've heard from our community so far at our, you know, heavily-promoted facilities-related meeting, a lot of the concerns were not just from the people, I mean, we did hear concerns from people who live in the neighborhood, but also the parents who are dropping off their kids, who want to be able to go on with their day after they pick up or drop off their children. So, and, you know, everybody wants, teachers want to be able to go home at the end of the day, we don't want them, like, elbowing other people out of the way in order to get out of here. And I, so obviously, a big part of this is the facilities, or, is the traffic piece. I think a lot hangs in the balance. I am literally, like, waiting with bated breath. I cannot wait until this traffic study comes out so that I can really digest it and I get the sense that I'm not the only one.
What was the timing of that, traffic study?
Next week.
It's next week, okay.
It'll be a nice Christmas.
I would just caution us to not expect to solve all the traffic problems of the community, which is traffic study.
There haven't been a lot of plots that I've had where I'm like, there's no point until the traffic study comes out.
There's gonna be great insights, but kind of like the 45-year-old windows and old bathrooms were replaced, I mean, like, there's narrow streets in Austin, and so that we just, just keep that in mind, that I don't know, think there's, there's no magic bullet for any of these things at the end of the day.
All right, guys, good work tonight. Thank you to our staff, our cabinet, our admin for their hard work on that, and for really just diligently slogging through all of our questions and all of the community questions, it's very much appreciated. So without further ado, we will now continue on to item 2.2 on the agenda, which is our equity item of the evening, and update on ARC, our reading curriculum.
Yes, we asked Kim and Maria to join Jessica. And me. And again, to the board and to the community, Jessica put together quite a comprehensive presentation. The intent is to go through this, you know, in an efficient and effective way, but it's there for reference for many people, and of course, the board has had this presentation, so they might have more questions of in-depth of a particular slide or area.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Crossling, and fellow trustees and cabinet members. So I'm excited to have an opportunity to be in front of you this evening. I first want to thank the board for their continued support regarding our literacy and MTSS initiatives, because your support provides pathways to positively impact outcomes for all of our students. I also want to take this opportunity, when we launched our initiative a year ago, we began with the phrase unity of effort. So I really want to take an opportunity to thank everyone because it's truly a unity of effort across the district. So we just heard from Jared, and we heard trustee Schenaker say that they do things above and beyond other custodial staff. And when I tell you the pallets that arrived with reading materials, right, that our buildings and grounds were able to absorb those deliveries and help get them into our buildings, so I wanted to take an opportunity to thank them. Our clerical staff, including Maritza Viera, who works with me, who has processed thousands and thousands of POs, to make sure that materials have arrived successfully in buildings and into classrooms. Teaching assistants who have helped organize and distribute materials. Our building leaders who have stood behind this initiative and helped teachers in their cla, in their buildings. Our teachers who are working hard every day, learning new ways of providing instruction, building new skills, and learning new resources. And our students who are working hard every day to become strong readers and writers. And my fellow cabinet members, of course. So I wanted to start there. I know that our presentation has American Reading Company in the title, but what I really wanted to frame our thinking around tonight is that this is a literacy initiative, and American Reading Company is our resource. So we really are focused on implementing strong reading and writing instructional practices so that our students become well-rounded literary publicists and, you know, analytical analysis of literature in our MTSS Tier One process, and that ARC is just the resource that we chose. So like interim superintendent Fox Alter shared, some of these slides will be repetitive of things that we shared previously, so I won't spend a lot of time on them, but I will highlight some of the key levers in our implementation process. So one, when we began our search for the resource that would fit best in Austin, and for our community and our students, we always begin with our long-range plan. So we would look for things that scaffolded materials so that we were able to differentiate instruction. This second slide, Slide 4, is one of the areas I wanted to highlight. I did rename balanced literacy, blended literacy, because I think we have a responsibility to provide literacy instruction that infuses the science of reading, which is a body of research, what research says works well for kids, right? So it's systematic instruction framework that includes the science of reading. We have equity as our district goal, so we chose a resource that put equity in the center of their work. Content knowledge and vocabulary development are literary gatekeepers. If you can't access vocabulary and you can't access content knowledge, it becomes hard for you to engage in the reading and writing material that's presented to you. We wanted a formative assessment, part of our MTSS process, is that ongoing assessment, assessing where students are, and then designing instruction to meet our students' needs. Again, the Tier One, and then really, in Austin, because of our dual-language program, we were looking for a resource that was not a translated resource, but really a Spanish parody, and helped develop Spanish language acquisition equally as it does develop English language acquisition. So again, we looked at what other well-known resources we're seeing about American Reading Company. So Ed Reports is in there, if you want to highlight it. Ed Reports reviews lots of curriculum materials and has criteria around text quality, building knowledge, usability. They also do math, science, and social studies, everything, but if you want to click and see what they say about other resources, we looked at that as a resource. We also paid a lot of attention to Forbes. Forbes doesn't really get too involved in educational resources, but it did make a lot of comments about American Reading Company. Slide 6, we also, again, like I said, wanted to find a company that mirrored our beliefs in Austin, and what we felt were strong in our goals to provide instruction for students, and American Reading Company is life, literacy, and pursuit of happiness, focusing on equity for all students in their literacy learning. Another key lever that we focused on in our, in our search for a resource was what was gonna be the easiest shift for teachers in learning new content and new skills and strategies. And so we did have Teachers College a balanced literacy approach prior, and you could see we took a look at what was the same in both of the instructional frameworks, and then on Slide 8, what was kind of different. And one of the reasons American Reading Company was chosen is where Teachers College was lacking, American Reading Company filled those gaps for teacher resources. And then Slide 9, just a reminder that our key focus areas were around unity of effort, creating that common language of literacy across our system, focusing on equity and building a community of learners. On the right side of your slide, you see building collective efficacy. We focused on the research of John Hattie and what he said, what his research is 10 years of, a body of research across 10 years in school systems, and what has the highest impact on student outcomes. So collective efficacy, teachers building collectively their capacity in a framework has the highest impact on student outcomes. So previously, the board asked, was it normal to see improvement at this rate in a year one, year two? Well, we leveraged the five-high-impact-effect-size research in our decision-making process. So there, that's a, you know, a review of what brought us here, and now we'll go into the creation of the plan. There was a lot of intentionality around the plan creation, and so we'll focus on that. Dr. Sanchez began the work in looking for a new literacy research in 2020 and 2021 with his cabinet members at the time. I joined the district in 21, 22. And you can see, the bullets listed here are all the activities that happened prior to implementation, right? So I won't read through all of the bullets, but one thing to highlight that makes our implementation unique, other than other implementations, is we provided resources to teachers and professional learning the June prior to implementation. That gave educators the summer, when they're exploring and thinking about how they're gonna provide instruction the following year, the time to be familiar with what was gonna be new the following year. Our implementation process on Slide 12 really focuses on best practices around managing complex change. So I won't spend a lot of time on this, but if you look across the top, if you have a vision, you identify the skills, incentives, resources, and have a clear action plan, equals success. If you're missing any of those pieces, then you can get false starts, frustration, resistance. When we built our plan, we made sure there was a vision, there was a focus on skill development, incentives for teachers, resources, and all of those things so we could meet success. Slide 13 kind of highlights for you where those live in our implementation plan. So we have shared commitments that you will see in a later slide. We have a four-year implementation plan that highlights for the district that we've committed to this implementation across four years. We have pacing guides, timelines, and goals set forth that are clearly articulated to teachers and everyone, and leaders, and everyone in our community. We have professional coaching days. This year, it's 10 days per grade, and year one, it was 10 grades, 10 days per building, and then we made that shift. Last year, an incentive was, we provided unpacking time at the beginning of the year to teachers. We're still working on some of the incentives for this year. The resources, we've clearly, you know, you've heard about all the resources that ARC has, the libraries, the toolkits, making sure that every classroom educator has their own manual guides so they can think and learn alongside each colleague. So if there's an inclusion partnership, both teachers have their own manuals, they also have online access to materials. And the action plan is focusing on the different implementation focuses for each year. So last year, it was understanding the assessment, and this year, it's understanding small group instruction and the toolkits. So here's just an image, it's very, you can click it open. It is our, our document, if we wanted to, oh, good. If you take, if you were to take that managing complex change and go across one of the years, you would be able to identify the resources, the professional learning, like, the focus in year one and year two. And you will see that in the following years, there's not a focus identified because our implementation committee, that is comprised of leaders and teachers, helped create that focus for the following year. So it's a collective decision-making process. So Slide 15, I want to spend a little time on. Slide 15 kind of really is a great image that is created alongside ARC, so this is one of their leadership images. I can't take full credit for it, but what we can see is the primary drivers are what we were talking about. Those primary drivers are creating a reading culture, helping our system become an expert at that coaching and the ERLA and ANEEL, that assessment tool, focusing on standards-based instruction and that collaborative culture, right? So that all students are reading on or above grade level. What's important to notice is the work side, that's what happens in the classroom. So we want to create this culture, and then here's how that plays out in the classroom as far as the workflow. So we have reading practices, school and at home. We all know the 30-minute reading, you know, the reading steps, 30 minutes of reading independently in school, 30 minutes at home. We have routines and procedures, we're focusing on equitable conferencing, which is group work and individual work. Right now, our teachers are engaged in level accuracy as we build our capacity and skills and deepen our work regarding the assessment tool. They collaboratively work together to assess each other's students and kind of level-check their assessment process, building our instructional expertise, our data analysis, and instructional planning. So this is another, Slide 16 is another unique element of our implementation process because we are focused on implementing with integrity. We have designed eight commitments that we say, across the system, every teacher will commit to these eight commitments. So this allows us to have some consistency while balancing the art and science of teaching. So teachers have flexibility within their curriculum and instruction in their classroom, but everybody's implementing within these eight commitments. Then when we move to Slide 17, we start talking about how we are being responsive and flexible in our implementation based on teacher feedback. So on the left side, you'll see it says planned, that was what was planned for that year of implementation, and then based on teacher feedback, how do we adjust across the year? Because it's important to be flexible and listen to what the community is saying they need, and then adjust and modify as you go through science of implementation, right? So some of the feedback we got last year was that the coaching sessions were too short in buildings that had two grades, so we added days to those buildings that had two grade levels. We also started facilitating meetings with our dual-language program, increased materials based on, once we were able to give the assessment and see our students' needs, we added materials. The original implementation, we purchased two grade levels below, but there became into grade levels up for the toolkits, giving a range. And then based on the assessment, we started adding into what teachers needed so they could support students in the classroom. Over the summer of last year, on Slide 18, you'll see how we started building, continuing to build on our vertical and horizontal alignment with the scope and sequence documents that we created, again, focusing on the New York State standards. we created, again focusing on the New York State standards as a primary driver and ARC as the resource that is helping us to meet those standards, right? We also layered in Newsella as a resource. Newsella has text sets that are already pre-designed to support the units in American Reading Company and allow teachers to differentiate the text and also differentiate the language. We also aligned across the summer our foundation scope and sequence work with the ARC Word Study. So we wanted to maintain explicit instruction of foundational skills, but because the two programs have a different scope and sequence, slightly different, we brought in a consultant over the summer to work with our primary educators, and they took a look at the ARC scope and sequence and foundations, and they aligned those skills so that it's more around teaching the skills to students and the strategies, and then here's the resource that supports that instruction.
Okay, I don't want to break your flow, but can I ask a clarifying question about that? So like, because of the foundations, this is like the science of reading, direct phonics instruction, like these are the rules, this is how you follow the rules. So what I'm hoping I'm hearing from you right now, because this is a question that I had, and then you're like kind of already getting there. So like when a student is working in our class, because I know that part is like group whole class instruction, that in, in Word Study, they're learning about how putting an E at the end of a word changes a vowel from a short vowel to a long vowel. Is that now what they are also learning at the same time in foundations? Because I know the first year, it was like, they were going to learn that in foundations anyways, but maybe they were going to do that in March, and now they're doing, you know, like it was like kind of separate rules that they were learning at the same time?
Yeah, so we streamlined those. And we said, this is what's happening in foundations then. And you can actually, you can access those documents on the district website under the literacy scope and sequence because you have a district email. You can go right in and see what they look like.
Thank you.
Just, sorry, just a quick question. Can you go back to the news, Newsella?
Newsella.
Is, is Newsella, is that really new to the, to the district, or has that been around?
So we brought, so Newsella had a free portion of their resources that were available to teachers. We started paying for secondary last year and infused it into our system with professional learning for the paid version. And then this year, we brought it to elementary. And the ARC curriculum accompaniments were added last year.
Was there a difference between the free versus the paid?
Yeah. And actually, it's more restricted this year. The, the free has really just become news updates where, where you really want the rich articles that support the curriculum that you're teaching, and you can do projects, and you can do assessments and all. And it's already integrated. I could go on forever, so you can tell me stuff, but it's integrated with NWEA automatically. So when we give our universal screener, then the Excel level that comes up for the student integrates into NWEA. And so when they pull up articles, it's automatically differentiated to their level of text complexity that they need.
That's a great question.
Yeah, it's a great question, and looking at how we're supporting systems and structures to provide excellent resources for educators and our students and our families. So moving on to, so that's like how we got here and where we were in our implementation. Now we talk about how we're collectively constantly analyzing and monitoring our implementation process. So some of these data slides you've seen before. The slide 20 here is our New York State assessment data where it showed that we definitely had a need to make a shift in our instructional practices and our resource. And then you see the fall-to-fall third month ERLA and ANEEL data that we shared at our Asking by the Numbers presentation that Maria and Helica shared with you. And you can see that one of the highlights here is that our emergency percentages are decreasing and our proficiency are going up. So paying attention to grade two, for example, the year prior, there was 28% proficient at emergency in year one, and this fall, it dropped to 15%, right? And then if we look at our proficiency above grade level, last fall, and in the third month of instruction, it was 33%, and this year, it was 47%. And then again, if you look at our ANEEL data, we see the same trends. The one thing that I wanted to highlight here is that if you look at implementation science and research around implementation science, typically, you see a performance dip for up to three years, where when you add a new resource to a system, as teachers, leaders, educators build capacity in students, you will see your performance drop. And why you see districts constantly changing around every three years is because sometimes they don't sustain past that drop when, when performance comes back up. So one of the highlights around our implementation is we have not seen a performance drop. And so we are continuing monitoring that. So the new data that you see is slides 23 and 24, which is where we are continuing to monitor performance month by month against last year to this year. So if we look at second grade last year, in the fourth month of instruction, we had 50% of our students at emergency level, and this year, it's 29. So when we think about these proficiency levels across the year, remember, skills get harder and harder as students grow across the year. And what we see here is that our proficiency level last year at this time of the year was 32%. Right now, it's 52%. So instead of seeing that dip, again, we're seeing that increase. And again, we see the same trends with our ANEEL data. So it's helping us see that our English proficiency and our Spanish proficiency are going up.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Just looking at the data, I want to make sure, is this the same as the other presentation you had where the 2022 kids in the, so it's like the gray, kindergarten gray 2022, and then they become the first grade 2023 red?
Yes, yes. So we're doing it month by month because the benchmark in the ERLA and ANEEL change month by month, right? Because you want to see growth in students. So it's not, we're monitoring it every time that benchmark changes. The, the next level of that work that we're doing within our new data position, Tim Scholten, we are analyzing if it said that our students were proficient in April last year, did they show up proficient on the state assessment and did NWA? So we're still analyzing that process, and we'll probably, we will compare it again this year because remember, last year, when our students took the ELA state assessment, we had only been engaged with American Reading Company resources for eight months. So we just want to monitor that across some, a time span. So in addition to our qualitative data, our quantitative data, we look at qualitative data.
Jessica, just a quick question, just on, on this. So just to understand, at the, the engagement with ARC is four years, right? It's a four-year contract with them right now?
We don't have a contract. We have a four-year implementation plan.
Implementation, okay. So are there target goals at the end of the four years? Like, I think your overall goal, right, is to get all the kids proficient. Is that the ascent goal? And then at four years, we decide, you know, did we make it? Did we not? Or is it more like, well, we want to go up 10% year over year to get to X? Like, is there a target four-year plan goal?
So at the beginning of each year, we set a goal based on our current data proficiency, right? So year, year one, I think we had, I don't know the exact numbers, I could get them to you, but we have set very lofty goals. And so all, so the short answer to your question, and which is a great question, is we want all of our students to be proficient readers and writers. So we're measuring how far our students are growing in our implementation process, and then we'll take a look at, is, is this resource meeting the needs of our district as we continue along each year?
Got it. So I mean, are you able to say right now in year two where we are in year two, understanding year one was only eight months? Are we on tra, are you, are we on track?
Yeah.
We're on track.
Yeah. I could get those, those district-wide goals for you and share them in a, in a update, and you will see. So going towards our qualitative data, we use implementation rubric. And so here's what the rubric says, right? And so we say, is it in our system? Not at all. Are we initiating the implementation, implementing, and, or has it been institutionalized, right? And so building leaders and teachers in our implementation committee come together, and they, they do a self-reflection on where they are in their implementation, and we use that, and then set goals for next steps. And what that translates to is slide 26, really understanding our current system and where we want to be in our focused collective efforts in our learning practice, identifying the challenges and needs, and then setting identified priorities. So, and then what's really a highlight or, you know, brilliance of this process and teachers engaging in this process is our priorities are directly aligned to our district priorities, right? So what came up as an identified priority is to continue develop our capacity in the new learning and deepening our understanding around designing toolkit lessons, which is small group work, right? So that's directly in alignment with our district-wide goal of small group work. Also engaging in understanding the assessment of the ERLA and ANEEL and entering data and understanding what that data means with our point system and other areas of that assessment is directly in alignment with our data literacy district-wide goal. Then you see our next area is year two, because we are only in year two of our implementation process, even though it feels like it's a lot longer. So we have lots of planned activities. We already have our summer curriculum writing dates shared out with the community, and as we continue to hear feedback from educators, we will adjust.
Jessica, just a question on the research. The research, i- is that on just the K through five piece of it? Is that what that's based on? Or is that, what's?
Which, which, what?
So you're talking about this, the, the research that supports, you know, what we're talking about, that's, you know, research to specific literacy instruction, or, you know, any of the research that you referenced there. That's, is that all based upon K through five research? That, that's kind of, is that what's driving?
Not all of it is based on K through five. If you think about the science of reading, it's about language acquisition, what students need in areas of continued learning for literacy, complex text, and text analysis is a higher level, what you would see in a middle school and high school.
So is that, does the research encompass that?
Yeah, it does. And then, you know, the ed reports will also show that text complexity and understanding that. And then I think one of the things that we, every district is challenged with in the wake of COVID is that students in their secondary settings are demonstrating a need for more foundational skill support than we have previously experienced in our field. And so ARC does support our secondary teachers in providing that instruction. And then we did want to share with you our collegial feedback. So it's grouped in student focus. So listening to the voices of our educators and leaders out in the buildings, some things that they shared was that students are very familiar with rituals and routines of the classroom. There's, students have agency over their own learning. Students are asking teachers and coming up to teachers and saying, I think that I've mastered my power goal, and I think I'm ready for a new one, right? When are you going to conference with me? I'm ready to move on. So that's power in their own learning. Families are engaged. Students are very excited about the units and the content they're learning, the nonfiction piece of it, becoming experts in that field. They're demonstrating independence, and they have stamina, an increased stamina. Educators are saying they really are excited about the common language of literacy across the whole system because it's a collective unity of effort. When we're talking toolkits, everyone in the system knows what we're talking about. When we say ERLA, everyone knows what we're talking about, right? There's a stronger sense of collegiality. I thought that was a key highlight because teachers are supporting each other across the system, right? So middle school teachers could talk to anyone who's doing toolkits, our ENL department educators are collaborating, our reading teachers are collaborating, our 1213 teachers are collaborating, everybody's collaborating. Teachers are deepening their understanding. One aspect where we have received feedback from both teachers, which is highlighted here, and from ARC, is that our leaders are the highest engaged out of any implementation they've seen. So there was an intentionality in our implementation plan to start year one with our leadership learning series, which doesn't exist in all implementations, and our building leadership attends those every, once a month. They engage in building capacity and alongside the ARC coach around what instruction, literacy instruction looks like in the classroom. You've seen in our updates, the book that we're using. You've seen all of the things that we've been engaged in, and that I think is a highlight and highlights their commitment to supporting their teachers and their students in their building. And then just collegial feedback overall around the data that we see an overall decrease in the percentage of students at emergency levels, and we see a decrease overall at risk levels and an increase in our proficiency levels. And I'm just making sure, I think that's everything that I wanted to say. Any questions? Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for providing us with the overview. Actually, I have a couple of quick questions. You mentioned the teacher feedback, and I know like when we initially rolled this out, some of like the rumblings we were hearing in the community and from teachers were that it's just like they felt unprepared with this new curriculum and what to do. And I think you had mentioned like fidelity and integrity within the instruction is really important. So I agree, right? We want to be doing that. How do we gather the teacher feedback? What are the, what's the, are we doing a pan, panorama or something else?
There's three ways. We send out a survey. We have representations on the, the literacy implementation committee. So there's leaders on the implementation committee, representation of ENL, dual-language, special education department, classroom educators, middle school, high school, elementary. We can't have everyone because you want the committee to fit into a space, but we have represent, and that committee list is shared out across the community. So in your building, you can connect with the represent, representative on the committee, and so they can share your feelings and, and thoughts. So that committee meets all last year and then this year as well. So the survey that, and we have instructional council where cabinet meets with instructional council once a month, and they're able to share feedback that they're hearing in the building. In addition to that, as much as we can, we attend the ARC coaching sessions to listen in with teachers. We facilitate meetings when teachers were, you know, we just had a meeting at Park with a group of teachers around toolkit lessons last week. We had a meeting with teachers around dual language to hear their voice. So we're in the buildings, listening, and also our leaders, our leaders who are there every day, and they share with us, these are some of the challenges, and this is okay. And then we have a rhythm of communication with coaching. So for example, there was a, it was shared last year by teachers that some teachers were getting information in one building and other teachers were not. So hearing that feedback, we created a rhythm of communication between myself, the district champion, and then the leadership, our leadership coach through ARC, who supervises the ARC coaches. And we created kind of a template of this is the content that will be shared this fall. So there was a consistent message across the system. So that's just one example where it came up through, you know, instructional council or, and building leaders or by attending sessions.
So if you, what's some of, what are some of the challenges you're hearing? So if you, what's some of, what are some of the challenges you're hearing when you hear challenges? And are there any that, I know we've met a lot of the challenges, right?
We have.
I don't mean to put you on the spot. And I love, I love all the positivity, but like, you know, what's the real talk? What are some of the challenges and what are our plans for that?
So let me think. So some of our challenges are still around schedules for dual language. So we are continuing to explore that. I am working with Nancy de la Cruz of Royo and Mrs. Maria in Helicamayor. We are collaborating with Portchester, who has implemented ARC as well and their dual language has more experience with the resource. And so we're going to go visit there. We're going to learn from that visit and say, what did you do differently? And then come back and debrief with teachers alongside us and say, okay, well, what did we see there that we might, what's a potential move? You might have seen this language in my updates, potential moves and what are power moves that I saw and potential moves we might want to use? So taking a look at that and taking a look at best practice and what research says, support students and then saying, does ARC provide that and leaning on our coaches? Another challenge is teachers learning the content that they're teaching. So ARC is focused on nonfiction because of the research around the 30 million word gap of students in poverty and what gaps they have in their vocabulary and exposure to experiences. Right? So that research focuses the nonfiction and why the units are typically social studies and science. And in the secondary level, they're high social studies and science. Right? So that's been a constraint. But last year, we worked with the social studies coordinator and she provided resources to teachers so that they could feel like they are learning more of the content that they're be, that they're teaching in the vocabulary. But even though that that's a constraint and a challenge, we're still teaching the literacy skills through the content. So it's not like the students have to master the content. They master the research behind what they're reading in the nonfiction, which is really a college and career-ready skill. When you go to college, you're reading and then you're writing about your reading and typically nonfiction in college courses. Right? So how to teach students to research questions, choose a topic, dig deep into what that looks like, and then be able to produce a piece of writing that explains what they learned. So that's a different shift than creative writing. So that's been a shift in the learning as we learn new methods of providing instruction to our students. So one of the big challenges we, we hear is that the writing part of ARC. So understanding that it's a mega cognitive task of writing about reading and creative writing is a little different and how do we support both has been one of the things that we're going to dig into probably during curriculum writing this summer. Yeah.
That sort of sparked another question. You know, I remember my son's fourth grade class, they were reading a book. It was fiction. It was about a tree.
Magic Treehouse is third grade, I think, but maybe fourth grade.
Maybe the giving tree or something. The giving tree, something along. Do we still have space in our curriculum to do those kinds of nonfiction books or we don't anymore?
Fiction books, you mean?
Sorry, fiction books. Yes, sorry.
So yes and no. It's, so ARC, we committed to 120 minutes to provide instruction based on what research says needs to happen. Each unit has a core text where you're designing instruction and modeling thinking for teachers, just like TC. So TC would have a mentor text that the teacher would use to teach theme. So I always liken it to Hunger Games because it's easy. If I was using Hunger Games as a mentor text and I was teaching character development, how authors craft around developing character across pages, then we know that the author has, everyone here is seeing Hunger Games, I think. So when Katniss doesn't kill the deer, the author is foreshadowing her humanity or giving you a glimpse into her humanity when she doesn't kill her friend in The Hunger Games. And that's an example that a teacher would use in a mentor text. So ARC is built the same way. There's a mentor text around nonfiction. Nonfiction is typically a little shorter. So there's opportunities to, for teachers to, that's the balance between the art and science of teaching and the mentor text. So some of the things, and Kim could chime in, in some of the ways, one of the ways we've talked about ensuring that our students have access to the learning is it doesn't always have to be a text. So where there's opportunities to add other mentor literary devices, you could use movies, you could use podcasts, you could use short films, Disney short films. So really UDLing, so there are opportunities to do literature-based instruction and use mentor texts that way if it aligns to what the unit is teaching. So again, helping teachers know what the skills and strategies are of the unit and where there's flexibility in bringing other elements in. And then if they have other opportunities across the day outside of the 120 minutes, they can read whatever they want. Right?
Right. And that's probably, I imagine you're alluding to this more challenging in our dual language programs where their times are already like a little bit more condensed.
So yeah, we're looking into that. I do want to point out, because it was like impromptu conversation, a lot of the toolkit lessons will lean on fiction too. So the standards are 50% fiction, 50% nonfiction. That's what your instruction needs to drive. And so a lot of our students who engage in independent reading and small group work, there's other opportunities. So a student could be reading two to three books. They could be reading a book they chose from their library, the library. They could be reading a core text that matches their research book. Right? What they're researching during research lab and an independent book. And one could be nonfiction, one could be fiction, one could be something else.
And then I'm sorry, I know I'm asking a lot of questions.
That's okay.
I went to another West Putt, you know, they get the board members around from all, you know, and I happened to be in a breakout group around curriculum with the president from the peak skill board. And something that she said that they do, because they have similar demographics to us, right? You know, Kim knows very well. Something that they do to try to evaluate the efficacy of their curriculums is they take data and they disaggregate it for students that have been in the district for three years or longer. Hoping that, I know this is new, right? I'm hoping we get to a point where we can look at our data like that because I think it might tell us a different story than some of what the data that we're looking at, just all students combined can tell us. I'd be interested to know what that says.
Yeah, that's a great, that's great feedback and a great way to think about how to look at data moving forward. The other thing to, that we are paying attention to is our primary students. So thinking about our K students and our first grade students who are moving up through the system and having consistent common instruction, how do they perform in three to four years as well? And then we also have ARC just added a dashboard where we can desegregate the data and take a look at specific populations to see how, you know, with our equity lens, how are we meeting the needs of all of our learners by pulling them out and seeing if their proficiency matches what the overall district proficiency is staying so that we don't leave anybody behind.
Great, thank you.
No child left behind.
That's it for me. So I know my colleagues are going to have some questions. I'm going to throw it over to the other side of the room first because I think I'm like inclined to look this way. Anything, I'll give you guys like write a first refusal here.
Roger can go ahead.
Okay.
I guess this is, you know, there's a lot of information here. I guess my question on this is there's the reading aspect of this and there's the comprehension aspect of it, right? Because you can go through and read and say what this is, there's a comprehension, but then there's the other piece of it, which is the translation to writing. Because a lot of, you know, if there's preparation towards college readiness, right? One of the things that that's always looked at, particularly as kids get towards the application process, is the writing ability of these students to be able to write a cohesive essay, learning all of the different applications of things that have come along the way. That, and in that college application process, you're not writing about necessarily nonfictional. You'll have, you could have both, right? You could have a little bit of fiction, nonfiction, however you decide you're going to imply or talk about your story, right? Not imply, but apply your story. How is all that being baked into this? Because I think the reading is great, you know, right? In terms of trying to help build reading proficiency. The next piece of that is really understanding, how do you take that and how do you synthesize that to build upon that? Because I think one of the things that I see, and I think, I can't remember, it was brought up in prior meetings, but it may have been one of the trustees brought up, there's, there's a humanities aspect of that that really kind of helps to bring out a little bit more of expansive understanding and then the application of, of critical thinking that goes into a piece of this. And that critical thinking can translate itself into critical writing. And that critical writing is not, you know, intro, first, second, third, and then conclusion just by itself, because that could actually be more argumentation-based writing, but it's much more of expressive writing that takes into all these different factors that are in there. So there, because there, you think about the wide range of students that are there, that it's not just, you know, one group of students versus another, but it's actually the whole, the whole group of students or the whole student in and of itself. How do we take that and really develop that further from that comprehension to the writing application?
So that's a great question, right? And as we continue to build upon and deepen our understanding of this resource, ARC does have all of those components included in it. And we are, the ask was to have the spring PD with coaching focus a little bit on the writing. So for example, this edit, I pulled up an editing document in one of the middle school units where this, there's explicit writing card around editing your work and what a good piece of writing should include. There's also, you know, essay rubrics that are built off the standards so that it's scoring the same thing that the standards is asking and we, we're, we are just building our capacity. So teachers may be using those rubrics, they may not be using those rubrics, which is okay because the science of implementation, we're still in our growth process. Right? So just bringing those back to awareness of here's where it lives in, in American Reading Company because it is there, is just building capacity around that.
Yeah. I mean, I would just be very interested in wanting to see, you know, the preparation for college readiness is that ability to be able to articulate yourself, particularly in a space where the college application, oh, sorry, college acceptance rates are becoming thinner and thinner. You know, and I don't know if that's going to sustain itself or what it's going to look like, but I think the thing is want to make sure that everybody has that chance, but it seems to be more and more, it's not, no longer just about your score. Your score is by itself because there are plenty of students, unfortunately, aren't getting the chances into the schools that they want to, you know, even if they're kind of like a SUNY school, right? But there, if it's an essay that makes them stand out because that's how they learn how to develop and write and build their skills, we want to prepare them sooner than later in terms of being able to synthesize all of that together to learn how to write a cohesive, expressive piece of work that becomes part of their application, whether it's a common application essay or it happens to be a supplemental essay with being asked.
So I think that's a really good point and there's two things. So what I'm, I'm hearing that you're saying is the focus on deep analysis and understanding where my writing is presenting my ideas. So remember ARC Core is through eighth grade and then we have ninth, 10th, and 11th where ELA teachers are deepening a student's skills and strategies around their writing. And ARC, I just pulled up one of the weeks, this is overview of writing. So they're focusing on themes in literature, then central ideas in informational text, then revising a text analysis using the argument lens, then figures of speech, editing, and then editing and publishing their work. So that is like a foundation to what you're talking about so that our students are strong in their writing skills when they leave eighth grade and go into ninth grade. And then our ELA teachers are able to further hone those skills so that they're meeting the needs that you just talked about.
Do you have any other questions?
Can I?
Comments? Yes, go ahead.
All right. I just, I want to, I think it's important for me, I think I've said this to you before, but I think it's important for me to say in public, just thank you for how much you've explained ARC, I mean, to me in particular, but to everybody I know when this started. I don't think anyone asked more questions about it than me. I joked that I think I understood the program better than my kids' teachers did when we started because I asked so many questions. And I said it then, I said, I want to support you, but I can't support what I don't understand. And you've done a really fabulous job of explaining it to me. I've seen, you know, like I think Rob likes to say, like, what, focus group of one, right? Like I've got my own two kids that are really in the ages where they are learning to read. You know, I have a second grader now, so she was in first grade when we started this. And just seeing how it's already evolved between last year and this year and how much more honed in and focused it is. I think at some point I asked my kids last year, like, hey, what's your power goal? And they were like, what's a power goal? And now my second grader is coming home and saying, I need to read, you know, two more kinds of books to finish a series in order to go on to my next level. You know, like they have a better understanding themselves of where they are in their reading journey than I think they did last year. So I'm kind of seeing the effects of the work as it's going. The more I learn about it, the more I like it. I'm really, you know, I've always been interested in how we receive feedback about it in order to improve it. And I can see that you baked that into your presentation and I really appreciate that. And I just, this is not a small undertaking, a huge learning curve for kids. Reading is always a huge learning curve for kids, right? No matter how you teach it. But just a huge paradigm shift in how you approach reading for teachers who have held a fast to TC for so long. And it is, there are similarities, like you pointed out, but it is a foundational shift. And even for parents to understand, you know, have a sense of how well their kids are reading. One thing that was nice about teachers' colleges at those levels just zip right through. So you have a sense of, oh, my kid was on a J and now they're on a K, so they must be doing better. And that's all you really knew about it. Just to even, you know, be able to like look at the little skills cards so that I know as a parent what questions I should be asking to help my own kids achieve those goals. I still don't think I'm, I'm probably the worst person who, about filling out a reading log.
No, no.
That's when my lying started.
My kids are not winning any awards for like the reading they're doing at home because they simply won't do it. Or my second grader still insists because of how she was shown how to do it. She writes, she doesn't like fake my signature, but she just writes the word mom. And I'm like, no, that's for me to sign. She's like, that's not what it said. And I'm like, whatever, I'm not going to argue about it. But so I just want to express my gratitude for that. The reason I don't have any questions right now is because you have already so thoroughly explained this to me that I feel like I understand it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine pretty much asked one of my questions, which I'm really interested in how we're closing that knowledge gap. So being able to see which groups of kids are maybe not doing as well or falling behind, I would be really interested in seeing and just how we're addressing that. I don't even know that it's happening, but if it is, it'd be interesting. And I had my reservations last year and my child has just blossomed. It's really amazing to see. Actually, Roger, when you were talking about the writing, like he went from, I mean, he's only in first grade, but he went from like writing almost nothing to this elaborate story of how to trap a turkey using cement. And it was like pretty amazing and he loves it. He fills out his reading log himself, so I don't have to do it. And my daughter's in pre-K and she started getting the book bags home and she's very excited because she has homework like her brother does, which I don't understand, but they, they really enjoy it. So yeah, that's my main question, the knowledge gap and just waiting and seeing. And thank you.
Thanks. We can get someone back to you.
So I just want to commend you on a great presentation. It's really outstanding. Someone who's sat here for a while and seen a lot of things. It's interesting, like part of when I got to the board in 2012, we had Race to the Top. It's interesting, like, part of when I got to the board in 2012, we had Race to the Top. We had the state requiring us to sign blank contracts with provisions that made, to put in things that made no sense to do. And for many years in cycles, especially in reading and writing, there has been this sort of churn and emotion that's going on. And for a lot of things, it didn't make a lot of sense that we had to push back on. I just think there was a great balance to your presentation tonight. The balance of fiction and nonfiction, the balance of phonics and basically whole language. The balance of all of this, it's like a diet, like, you need all of the above. And all these things, we've done in the district for a long time. But if you read some of the, you know, if you go out and you read the education papers and the magazines, you know, there's buzzwords and there's language put out there that makes it seem like things hadn't been happening. But these have always been happening. But finding the right fit, finding the common language around it, finding the systemic approach. I just give you a lot of credit for taking that from where it's at, getting through the initial phases of things and moving it along. Inevitably, there will be change and adjustments. But I think it was great to hear you talk about tonight, the feedback groups that you're getting, where you're, you know, changing the way you're consistent, you know, how things are being communicated, how you're taking feedback, how you're adjusting. Because, but what I, I think that's really, really important. But the piece that's just really heartening for me after watching years of just lots of things with everybody in the state struggle is just this kind of, this really well-thought-out, understood approach at the end of the day. So my only regret is that you weren't there in 2012 when the state was driving this and you weren't sitting there helping with this, because it would have changed the last 10 years dramatically. So I look forward to the work ahead and, you know, and happy to hear about the changes. Or, and it may not be ARC, it may be something else, and that's okay too. But just the iterative approach is really, really important. So just thank you for that and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Sorry, I do have one more question. And it doesn't really need an answer. I mean, if you know the answer, that'd be nice. One of the things that I was thinking about was, it said all the time that like, if kids aren't reading professionally by third grade, then they're kind of out of luck. But I'm seeing that kids who are, like, for example, third grade, 2022, 27% were proficient. And then in fourth grade, that same class, 45% were proficient. Do you have an idea of what is driving that? Because that was unexpected.
Well, I would say that what's driving that is that small group instruction and the intentionally designed instruction that teachers are able to provide that builds on research, right? So all of those toolkits infuse research into how students acquire language and build their reading. Like, there's technical terms, orthographic mapping, and those things that help students recover at a faster rate than they may have, that research may not have had access to before. So the research says that if students aren't reading by third grade, they may struggle for the rest of their educational career. It doesn't say they can't recover, right? So keeping that in mind, we're doing our best to help our students recover, the ones who are not here since kindergarten, with this resource. And I think we're seeing that shift in the data. So it's interesting, when you look at that, when you go up in the grades, the growths are a little bit lower. But that's okay, because again, we've talked about it before, the learning that has to occur to recover and come up to speed to your grade level is just that much more learning. So a student might need two years opposed to six months, depending on where they are in their years of learning. But I think it's because we're focusing on what research says, right? So a lot of it is around the national panel, which, what came out in 2000, right? It's not, it's not new research. It's that we made sure that our research, our resource infused all of those pieces, right? And that John Hattie work, right? Collective efficacy is huge. And I think we're seeing the impact, because the one thing we didn't highlight tonight is that many implementations will start at one grade and roll up. And when you do an implementation that way, you have seepage. And what I mean by that is you have teachers who, I'm implementing ARC, it's new, I'm in first grade, and you're still implementing something else in TC, but I really love that. So I bring back in what I love, because I'm watching you do that. And you have a watered-down version of implementation. And as it goes up through the grades, by the time you have three years, it doesn't even sometimes recognize where you started. Because we went district-wide, our whole system is learning alongside each other, and we're able to see, I think, faster impacts of that instruction now. But we'll keep watching it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think next on our agenda, we have a residency verification update, which is, which is, it's just always good to get an update, but it's also required according to our policy.
Good evening, everyone. I will be giving you an update on our residency re-verification. So our current registration process, I do want to emphasize that we do have a very comprehensive process that we are currently utilizing way before we decided to move into a residency re-verification. So there are two ways that a parent can register in our district. One way, they can use our online registration process, or they can come in and complete an application. So none of that has shifted with residency re-verification. When you do register as a parent in our district, you do have to show four proofs that you do reside in the Osseting District. And all of that documentation is based on state guidelines. So these are some examples of proofs of residency that our families have to present to us when they register as a new family in our district. So going into an overview of residency re-verification, we adopted a policy on May 17, 2022. But the conversation around residency re-verification really began in 2020. Research started based on the request of the Board of Education. And through doing a deep dive and finalizing a process, we did adopt and finalize a policy on May 17. We did not begin the residency re-verification until July 1st, after that policy was adopted. So at that point in time, for the 22-23 school year, we began residency re-verification for our students entering fifth grade. At that point in time, we had all of our families complete that residency re-verification February of 2023. So it took some time. So if you think about it, we began collecting residency re-verification in July. And we completed the process for one grade level February of that school year. I want to emphasize that through the residency re-verification, it did not yield any concerns at all for all of the families that did complete the process. Last year, we did have a Board of Education meeting. And as part of our policy, we decided that we were going to move forward with, going on with the residency re-verification for the 23-24 school year. The only change that we made was doing the residency re-verification for incoming fifth graders and incoming ninth graders. So when we began, and we just started with fifth grade, we're looking at approximately about 330 students when we did the first residency re-verification. For the 23-24 school year, we doubled that number because of doing two grade levels. So we began the process in May. So we began to communicate to our families that we were going to do a residency re-verification for fifth and ninth grade around the April-May timeframe. So what do the numbers look like? So the number of enrolled students in grade five, which were our fourth graders entering fifth grade, are 320. Give and take, that number can fluctuate at any time. The reason why I want to emphasize that number can fluctuate is due to any new students that come in and register, or students may leave the district. So number of families that were exempt are 16. The reason why you see that exemption is because part of the Board of Education policy states that if you registered within the recent years, within the last three years, you did not have to complete the residency re-verification. Or if your, if your child has a sibling, so for example, that was a fifth grader, and now you have a seventh grader and you completed it, you did not have to redo the residency re-verification for 36 months. So in September, we had approximately 169 families that completed. And then, as you can see incrementally, it has gone up. Remaining, we do have 116 families that do have to complete the residency re-verification in grade five. And when you look at grade nine, the number of enrolled students, once again, is 387. 31 of those students were exempt. And then you can see incrementally by month, we have increased with the number of families that have completed the process. Remaining for ninth graders are 182 students and families. So this outlines basically our timeline. As I mentioned, we began with an initial letter to families in April of 2023, informing them that we were going to begin the process for the 23-24 school year. We sent an additional letter that was a reminder sent to families that the registration process would begin in May and would continue through September. We did hire a clerical support person throughout the summer that assisted with making calls to families to remind them to complete the verification process. In September, we, in September, we sent a follow-up letter to families that were at the point that have not completed the re-verification. Now in December, where we are sending, and we just completed the mailing today, letters to families that are still in need of completing this process. So the number of those families are the numbers that I spoke about on our previous slide. For numbers remaining, those letters went out today. Along with the letters, we are making personal calls, and we are following up with emails as well. So some of our challenges, some of the questions may be, why do we have so many families that are at this point that have not completed the process? So one is that we have doubled the amount of students. So we are precisely where we were last year in regards to sending out the same letter that we sent out, that just went to families today, last year at the exact same time. The only difference is, we had approximately 320 families last year. This year, we have about a little bit over 700, about 710 families. So that is pretty substantial. Additional staff, it is a very time-consuming task. We do have a registration clerk. But also, I want to emphasize, as you have heard in multiple presentations, we do get multiple registrations throughout the day and throughout the year. We are looking at reallocating resources. So currently, right now, we are looking at utilizing our family engagement specialists. We have a translator that when they are not participating in CSE meetings, they are making calls to families. And we are looking at the potential of hiring some clerical support that could work either after hours or two days a week to make follow-up calls to families. Are there any additional questions?
Sorry, I just wanted to just bring up, I think, when you had said that there were no concerns at all in the, you know, the last, the one we just did, the fifth grade. Is that, was that, at the time then, you shared some initial data on the, on the fifth grade registration process?
From last year?
Yeah.
So none of the residency re-verification did yield any?
Right, so I don't, was that with the data that you had shared with us as the boards, saying how many students were enrolled and how many students unenrolled in that point? Because I don't think we ever got a follow-up from that when we said to look into that data around the change in enrollment due to, for whatever reason it was. So we didn't have any follow-ups from that.
I think, I want to go back and check, but I do think that we did look at, I do recall giving a follow-up update on that.
I don't, I don't think we did.
I'll look into it. I do believe that we had a few students that did leave our district. And I think that one of the questions that did arise, we had a decrease in enrollment from fourth to fifth grade. But I will go back in my notes and give a definitive answer.
Yeah, because I, I think as part of that, right? Because it was still too early for a data set. Because you're talking about a, a single grade, a single year. And we need to have, you know, something that was, right, statistically viable to be able to look to see what the real net effect of that is. Even if it's like, one student or two students that had to change because the fact is they're, they're not part of the district, and they went back to the district that they, that they should be attending, that, that could tip a classroom from its, from, at the max enrollment in the class to having to open up a new enrollment, a new section, right?
Yeah, I'll definitely look at where we started and where we ended. And give an approximation as to where students enrolled. So if they left our district, where did they go? And what were the variables that impacted that?
Right, I think that was the piece that we're missing. And, but I think now where you're, and it's not necessarily, I would need, just, I don't think it would make sense just to go back to fifth grade data. So I think it'd probably be good to, rather than go back and look at one year's worth of data, when you do have a full set of data, a little due to analysis of what happened, you know? Because if something's coming up and we haven't done this type of re-verification for, I don't know if we've done it in the past or not done it, whatever it might be, the fact that we're doing it now, and if that's causation for somebody to go back to the district that they were supposed to be in, then that, that's, that's a data point to be looked at.
I could definitely take a look at how many students we have lost or why our enrollment has decreased in certain grade levels, especially the elementary, once we started the re-verification.
I think also, you know, this was put on now, like, with the understanding, like, it's December, we didn't expect to have the data point for the full process for fifth and ninth grade, right? We just kind of wanted to check in with you and
Sure.
sort of get the pulse and see how it was going and what you might need from us. So I guess my thought process was, we'd certainly take another look at it in the spring once we, we have more data. I did, I did want to ask you, because it is concerning to me how many folks have not gone through the process. And it's, we're halfway through the year. Are you seeing, and to me, that's indicative of families that are not as connected to our school district and our communications as we want them to be. That's where my concern is. And I'm wondering, are you seeing trends? Are you seeing patterns? Are there things that we, as a board going into budget season, need to allocate resources for to improve the connected with, connectedness with those families?
I, I'm not sure if it's connectiveness or where things fall on priority list for families, right? I think that oftentimes, as parents, we have the priority of doing the homework and getting things done and work. And you receive a reminder or you receive a letter, and that may not be the first thing that's on your mind to fulfill. So I think it's, I think it could be just making sure that we're just not sending the letters, but making those personal calls. Because with calls come personal stories as well. And people just simply forgetting, or the fact that they think that they just have to upload the documentation to OLR and that they don't have access to, to a computer, or they don't know how to scan documents in order to upload that type of information to OLR. So when somebody speaks with them and they just reinforce that, no, you can come in and bring in your proofs of re-verification, then we'll see more people come in. So I think sometimes it is clarification as well. So I think it could be multiple reasons.
I guess that's a great point, which is sort of why I'm interested in the trends that you're seeing. Because if you're seeing, you know, half the people that we call don't know how to upload the documents or scan the documents, or don't have know how to upload the documents or scan the documents, or don't have access to a computer, well, that tells us what a great idea for a parent learning session that we can have, right? Because, forget residency re-verification, or whatever it's called, right? Like, that's, that's family computer literacy, and that's, that's a really important data point for us. So that's why I'm, I'm asking the questions. As you go through the next few months and complete the process, I'm super curious as to what your takeaway is when you come back to us, as to what kind of trends you're seeing.
Yeah, absolutely. And I also think, where are we getting interaction with the majority of our families? So where do we see our families come? They come to children's plays, they come to different events, they come to parent-teacher conferences. But oftentimes, when there are things that have time constraints, such as if you're meeting with a teacher for fifteen minutes, your, your mission is to get to that teacher, and you're not thinking about, okay, maybe I should stop and complete a residency re-verification. So I think even a Saturday Explore and Learn is a great possibility to reach additional families. And really, going into locations where our families are to make it easier to provide additional access is really important.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just coming off of that, I would say, Kim, like, this is just year two of this, right? And we just expanded to nine, and you literally doubled, three fifty, three fifty, right, seven hundred. I think last year, based, Captain, what you sent out, we were at, December seventh, there were forty-nine final requests, and again, that's for one grade. And it looks like, yes, we got about thirty-six percent of fifth graders to go and forty-eight percent of ninth graders. So I would say, if we're going to keep, to the board, if we're going to keep this, Kim, when it comes budget season, yes, please come and say, here, hey, look, here's what I need to do this. And so with that said, the policy, fifty-one, fifty, doesn't have dates on it. And to me, the board might want to consider that, again, if this is going to live on. We put some timeframes on it, because if we're going to have the policy, you know, Kim and staff still got fifty percent of ninth graders to go, thirty-six percent of fifth, we're going to be into January, into February, into March, and to me, that's too late if we're going to have a policy and look towards it. So I would say, Kim, you come back to the board, right, potentially, while the members agree, what you need to get it done, and then, policy-wise, if we're going to keep it, we probably could look to adjust that, to put, like, this should be completed by date X, so you, you come and ask for the resources to complete by date X. And I would say, date X, you know, certainly by end of December, if not sooner, if we're going to, if we're going to spend the time and money on the policy.
Yeah, I think that that's a reasonable request.
I have a comment to make in that vein. One piece of information that would be helpful to me when we come back is, like, how many hours on the clock were spent tracking this information down? Because if we track this information down, we've, you know, and it, and we kind of try to read tea leaves about why kids left the district, nobody's going to show up with their proof of residency that says that they live someplace else, right? Anybody who does attend here that shouldn't be here is going to not submit the paperwork and then just say that they moved, right? If, if this is effective. So even if we're trying to read the tea leaves about why kids are leaving, if we know we're spending, you know, this many, X many hours, and that costs more money than we could potentially even be saving with how many kids we would be, you know, preventing from attending school here who ought not to be, that's important information to have.
So I would, if we were to continue with this process, my recommendation would be to add an additional person to the registration office. So, whatever that costs...
So that would be the cost that you would say?
That would be...
This is what this is going to cost if we want to do this?
Yeah, because especially if we put a specific deadline, as you mentioned, Rob, in regards to December first, I think we have to be realistic. And I think that a person needs to be dedicated, and specifically dedicated to this type of work. Because I think that when we decided to adopt this Board of Education policy, we also emphasized taking on an approach that is caring and also compassionate for our families. And in order for an individual to do that, and to really dedicate significant time, you want to spend time talking to families, and you want to spend time explaining what the process is, if they have additional questions, but you also want to identify where they may need assistance. So then you're collecting that data to then say, okay, as a district, we need to add the following, such as certain parent courses, teaching parents how to utilize certain O Blast systems, maybe how to utilize Parent Portal. So, that does take a dedicated individual, that is more than just completing a process, that is taking a process and learning from the process in order to truly impact change within your district. So that would be my absolute recommendation, would be a full-time individual.
Thank you for that.
To that point, I'm curious, do you, I know it's fairly new, or the way we implement it now is basically on the front end with registration, but could you speak to how, if at all, the McKinney-Vento Act would kind of filter into this process, right? In making sure that when we're asking for re-verification, that that element is made aware to parents or that document that we just recently have been deliberating about and adopted, first read?
So, the McKinney-Vento, we do have a list of all of our students and families that fall underneath that category. So that is, that is a different approach that you would want to take with families. I believe currently, right now, in our district, we have slightly over fifty families that fall underneath that category. I would have to look at the grade levels, but that would absolutely be taken into consideration through this process.
Right, and my, I guess my question is the gray area where, yeah, you identified who might have, you know, qualified for that upon registration, but if, what if a family's circumstances went from, that didn't apply to them, but now there's a combination of re-verification, and now that applies to them? Are we implementing it in this process, that document, to make sure that people are like, oh my gosh, I don't, you know, they start panicking, right?
So, that's where that personal, that's where it's, when you're taking a process and impacting the system with the process, right? So, sending the letters and making parent calls is part of the process. But when you have individual conversations with families, and they disclose that this is their current situation, that I currently lived here, but now I am falling underneath the McKinney-Vento rules, that's, that's the depth of having an individual to truly make those connections with families. So currently, right now, we have not implemented that specific document while doing the residency re-verification.
Thank you. And so I guess to that point you were making about, you know, some of the challenges with why there's still so many, you know, people to get to, is because we, you know, as a board, decided that the culture of care element is supposed to be within this, right? And I think that takes, I think we discussed that last year, it takes manpower to really implement that with fidelity.
Yeah, it absolutely does. Because if you know an individual's story, it allows us to not just hold on to that information, but to link them with the appropriate individuals that can assist a family. So, it allows us to then engage in conversations with our family engagement specialists, our social workers, our psychologists, which we have built the capacity within our buildings to now support a family. So it's, as I mentioned, more than just a process, and that's the reason for the recommendation.
Thank you. So I'd be, personally, I'd be curious to see, because I know we had a discussion last year about going at it again another year, so we can have some more, you know, data that kind of really speaks to whether this process is needed. Thank you for pointing out, you know, that we do have a separate, kind of robust process in place already, so I think, you know, especially as we go forward, and we have a lot of financial decisions to make as a board, recognizing where this falls on that, is, or whether, how, how, you know, the, the cost analysis of whether we really do need to continue this in longevity. But I do thank you and everyone who's putting in the effort to, you know, see this through and make sure that, you know, we're not, you know, we're doing it as we intended to do it with some culture of care. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you saying that you need another person, because that's, I've been wondering the same thing throughout this whole thing that Christine mentioned, like, I would like to know if the cost of doing this is worth the, like, money that we would be making up? I am curious what happens if families don't, because I wasn't involved in this, so I was curious what happens if families don't complete the process.
So, we have to have a reasonable, we have to have reason to doubt that they live, or that they do not live in our district in order to pursue any further action. So, if, if we receive information that a family may not reside in Austining, then we follow a certain process. But through this process, we cannot just simply, if a family does not complete the process, just assume that they do not live or reside in the district. And that's really important to remember, because that's really not the purpose of, of just assuming that families are not residing if they don't complete the process. So there are certain limitations of what the district is able to do in those circumstances, with the exception, if somebody does report that they have residency concerns, then we're able to take further action. And that is beyond fifth and ninth grade, that is district-wide. And then we have an investigation process that we follow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a question on that, Kim. So if you send out mailings and things come back, I presume, as returns, you know, non-deliverable to addressee, that falls into the natural process of giving you reason to believe that you may not be in the district?
That is correct. So what we do is, in a circumstance such as that, we send the family a letter notifying them that it has been brought to our attention, that they may not reside at the address that we originally sent the mailing to. And they have to come in and provide additional proofs of residency. If they do not provide the proof of residency within a two-week timeframe, we do inform the family that their children would be removed from being enrolled in our district.
And I guess, out of this grouping that you did, was there, I mean, a question I have, just is, is there any sort of handle around how many of those actually did bounce back or not?
So it's interesting. In our, in the mailing that we just did in September, we did not get mailings back. The mailings for December just went out today, the final batch, so I can definitely provide an update, and not this week's Board of Ed report, but in the following one, when we come back in January, we should have a, a greater understanding if any mailings did come back to us.
And just to be clear, I know the answer to this already. It's not specifically when we send out these residency verification letters if they bounce back, that can initiate something. It's any mailing that we send out, we send out those facility...
Any mailing.
Any mailing that comes back, return to sender, you know? Any mailing can initiate that process.
That's correct. And usually, the post office will put a yellow sticker, and they will put where the new address of the individual is.
So, thanks.
So, the procedure then, we're in December, follow-up letters just went out?
Yes.
Right? So what's the next steps if, you know, I guess, the, the families that haven't verified yet, how many contacts have you had with them in general? Two, three, four, five?
All the letters that have been sent are for all, so we started, first letter goes out in April. We begin the follow-up in May, we send an additional letter in September, and then we did one in December.
Got it, so that's four or five, if I counted correctly?
Correct.
So, if you, like, does that ever stop and say, look, we've tried five, six, seven times, and then it moves to a next phase? I mean, I'm just trying to understand, like, what, how many letters?
So last year, we did not get to that. So I think we would have to have additional conversation if we were seeking a next phase.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. I think we're about to go into our first public comment section of the evening. There's nobody here in the audience in person. I will ask our clerk if there's anybody with a raised hand online. Okay, all right. No public comment section in the first section, could be something later, we'll see. I'm going in now to the consent agenda business of the board. I'll take a motion for four point one.
So moved.
Second. Four point one, resolution to appoint consultants for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Any discussion? I had a question on this, and I, I just see that there is a consultant that we are being asked to appoint, the Anti-Defamation League. We've had some instances of hate symbols in our district over the past couple of years, And I'm just wondering if you can provide us any sort of background on whether or not, I know we've worked with A D L in the past, so I didn't know if this is a continuation of that relationship, or if this is a response to, to anything this year, something new. It's a great question, thank you for bringing it up, Maria.
Good evening. Yes, this is a continuation of the work, it's actually amplifying and expanding on the work. This is focused on creating leadership among our students, so they will be engaging in professional learning, in workshops, to empower them. It's a total of thirty students that will be engaged in this work.
Okay, great, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Is there anything from four point two to four point six that trustees want me to break out? I'll take a motion for four point two through four point six.
So moved.
Second.
Four point two, resolution to approve a memorandum of agreement with Vassar College. Four point three, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Four point four, resolution to approve the minutes of the special meeting of November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Four point five, resolution to approve the minutes of the specialty meeting executive session of November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three. Four point six, resolution to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. I will take a motion for five point one.
So moved.
Second.
Five point one, resolution to approve recommended placements. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. From section six, is there anything any trustee wishes to have broken out?
Just have a question, quick question, six, six.
Can we do it in discussion? Or do you want me to break it out?
I just had a question before we potentially...
All right, so I'll break it out.
Thanks.
It's just easier that way. I'll take a motion for six point one through six point five.
So moved.
Second.
Six point one, resolution to approve the July two thousand twenty-three treasurer's report. Six point two, resolution to approve the budget and revenue report for July two thousand twenty-three. Six point three, resolution regarding the acceptance of grant funds from the Apolchi Family Fund, Austining First Steps program. Six point four, resolutions regarding acceptance of funds, refund to cultural arts program. And six point five, resolution regarding acceptance of donation of baseball cards from Mr. Clifford Base. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. I do want to point out the extraordinarily generous donation of fifty thousand dollars in item six point three from the Apolchi family to support our Austining First Steps program. We are extremely grateful, this is a really meaningful program, it helps us to chip away at the achievement gap and to expose some of our youngest learners to skills that they will need to be successful in our schools, and we can't thank you enough, truly. I'd give you, like, I feel like that's another big check moment. That's right. It's a really big one. And, and of course, thank you to all who donate to our school district, including the donation of baseball cards. Okay, I'll take a motion for 6.6.
So moved.
Second.
6.6, resolution regarding emergency evacuation agreement with the Tarrytown School District. Any discussion?
So, Mary, I think this is a question for you, super quick. This whole evacuation safety thing, that's been vetted on our end, I guess, whether by Jim or by you, and said, yeah, this, we should do this?
By all of the above and I'll terrace two meetings and, you know, trying to be transparent and public, but there's maybe certain times where we might need a backup system to our backup system to help us with evacuation and partnering with another school district in a mutual sense can help out. Like, let's say there was a flooding situation or something like that. Yeah, just, we have evacuation step one, evacuation step two, but this was something after two meetings with our consultants and with Jim that we felt, and Tarrytown felt exactly the same way.
That's all. Thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. I'll take a motion for 6.7.
So moved.
Second. 6.7, resolution regarding interfund transfers. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Okay, moving on to Section 7, is there anything that I should break out from there? All right, I'll take a motion for 7.1 through 7.11.
So moved.
Second.
7.1, resolution regarding civil service staff resignation. 7.2, resolution regarding bus attendant resignation. 7.3, resolution regarding administrative staff appointments. 7.4, resolution regarding professional staff appointments. Give me a second. 7.5, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments. 7 point. 6, resolution regarding support staff appointments. 7.7, resolution regarding bus attendant appointments. 7.8, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments before-after-school programs. 7.9, resolution regarding support staff appointments before-after-school programs. 7.10, resolution regarding support staff requests for leave of absence. 7.11, resolution regarding per diem substitute appointments. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention. Okay, we have our next audience recognition public comment section. There are no audience members in person at the board meeting. Is there anyone online with a hand raised who would like to make a public comment? Okay, there being no show of hands, that brings us to the next section of our meeting, which is board reports and dialogue. I think I mentioned that there were a couple West Putt events. I went to one regarding curriculum, which, which was really interesting. Putting it out there as food for thought, a couple of the districts had a board curriculum committee and like a very specific structure of how they work together whenever a new curriculum was proposed and like a policy and a process. And so like the collective sentiment was like, oh, wow, like they, they really have it together. And it intrigued me. I think RISE City had a very, had probably, I think we decided like the most clearly defined curriculum committee and policy. So I was going to ask them, actually, just to refresh my recollection, what that looked like for them and then bring that back. I don't, I don't know if anyone else wanted to share about their experiences?
I went to a couple all West Putt professional developments. The one that you mentioned earlier about understanding the tax cap, which Melissa shared out the documents, which were very useful. And the other thing, I, I attended like a board leadership-centered one. And it was very like group discussion-based. And one of the things that I heard, I want to say it was Greenberg, that one of the committees that they have that intrigued me was a board governance committee that was kind of responsible for keeping everybody, the board itself, on track with meeting its, its goals as far as scheduling, you know, super intense evaluations, self-evaluations, retreats and things like that. So my ears perked up at that and I just wanted to kind of put that idea out there as something to potentially consider for us if we think it's a good fit.
We do have, sorry, Melissa, go ahead. I think you were at both of those, right?
No, I was going to.
I was just going to say, we also have, we have agreed to establish the new board member onboarding committee. There's no urgency to doing it tonight. We can definitely do it tonight. But if there are other committees that people want to talk about or get information on as well, probably, it might make sense to do it all at once. But not my decision, 1 of 7, so.
And just for, just for clarity, the, it would also work, that committee would also work on the handbook as well? Or that was just strictly onboarding?
Strictly onboarding.
For curriculum, do you, are there like notes or something you could share? Like a charter for another one that we?
Yeah, I gotta get the info. I'll follow up with the RISE City president and see if I can get some more detail.
And that sounds like a pretty good one to me, speaking on behalf of myself. But I'd love to see what else is in there.
And we've talked too, as a district, about getting in a, like a curriculum cycle of evaluating our different subject areas. So that might be a nice partnership there.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add two cents into the conversation just around it. You know, I think curricular, you know, you want to be cautious about committees and basically having things in public and talking about with the entire board. So I think just before you, you know, I think in Austining, the history has been to basically have those as public meetings at the end of the day when we rise there and to use our leadership as the agents to go and do the research and come back and report to the board. So I know some districts, there's districts that don't have committees, there's districts that do have committees. And so I just think you want to look at this at a whole lens of, you don't want to have three people going off and working on something that all of a sudden comes out in public and, you know, goes through. So just a consideration around the committees. I would, I would really support, you know, I think you always want to go to your professional staff to sort of get their insight and guidance on this. And then you basically want to basically have any sort of public vetting of that. So just something to consider as you do this, where you just want to be cautious. That's all I'd say.
Yeah, totally agree. It definitely, I recall them, they had some very specific process about what the role of the committee was and ensuring that there were checks and balances to make sure that whatever was done in the committee was brought to the board, that, that there was some interplay. I'm not doing a good job of explaining it clearly.
You're talking about the same meeting?
The curriculum.
We were at together, right?
Right.
Okay. But I think that was a breakout room, you probably had that discussion in it, right?
And I'm doing a terrible job of explaining it. All I wanted to share was, I found it very informative. There is such a wide variety of how districts are doing it. And it piqued my interest.
Yeah, and they did, you know, just overall, they did kind of do a good job of, in the beginning, going through some of the points that Frank had brought up of just finding that balance, that healthy balance of where our responsibilities lie as a board and, and wanting to, I guess, engage in our curiosities around curriculum. But yeah, I think it was a good, there was a lot of good nuggets in there that could possibly be infused in what we already do around, you know, those areas as a board, from like the board level, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, and the second part to that, I'll just add in, just with the, you know, the long-range plan is traditionally what the district has used and the curricul, the cycles of curriculum review are really supposed to happen there. And I think with the pandemic, you know, some of those things, we've had leadership change, all of that. So I would encourage you to look at what's in there because all content areas are supposed to be on a cycle of review and report and update. And so just take a look at what we already have.
So I'm, like, I'm, I don't feel the need to like have any sense of urgency around like new committees tonight unless somebody tells me otherwise. Or at least the new onboarding committee. I think we probably will be well-served by getting our board handbook done first.
Agreed.
Okay. The communications committee met a couple of times. I'm just sorry, I'm just getting at my list. Christine takes way better notes than I do. So you, do you want to, or Rob, do you want to handle it?
We approved tonight the, the agency that will work with Nicole and the comms committee to get a mascot with the two-phase project. I think the, like, there's, there's three phases to it. There's the research and discovery, then there's some work, and then there's the rollout. And I believe, right, Christine, Catherine, the goal here is that we will have eight mascot or mascots by, was it June 2024? Rolled out. Or was it September 20?
I don't remember.
I don't remember.
But we, we, we paid, we agreed to pay for it tonight and we're going to move it along, which is, I think is great news that, that we're doing that.
And what the, what the iteration of that, we won't know until there's some sort of recommendations that come back based upon what the consultants coming back and says, here's, here's what the thinking is, right?
Yeah, it's a traditional, I'm sorry, I've gone through this before with logos, but yeah, you do research, you do your focus groups, you talk to students, you talk to maybe board members, you talk to teachers, you talk to staff, you talk to community, gather all the input. There's a couple of recommend, there might be some recommendations around that. Then you do design, pros and cons. You know, maybe you look at other districts, make sure we're not infringing, so to speak, on theirs. Not too much, like, you do all of that research and then there's recommendations that we presented out. I think the, the scope is, they're going to offer three, three options. A, B, or C. Pick and now you do all the planning around that. You know, lining up, like, you know, as you see here with our signage, all of that. So yes, Roger, that's the research, the development phase, and then the rollout phase. I think it's three phases.
Anything else that, that committee? I think that was most of what we talked about. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Just a question around, I'm sorry, Melissa.
No, go ahead. No, separate.
So a question to that. So just, I guess, just so I'm clear, so I guess has a decision been made to replace the pride? You're saying the new mascot, you're saying like that, so, so the committees made the decision to replace the pride or no?
They haven't made any decisions yet at all.
Okay.
They made a decision to consult with this person and see what they say.
That, that's correct. The, the, the committee, from what I remember, there was, I don't want to say unanimous, but we liked the pride. This would be a visual representation, could be an animal, could be whatever, to incorporate that. But I think some of the research might come back as they, and I would assume as they structure focus group or research questions, something should be around, what do you think of this pride thing? You like it? It's very important? It's been here? Like, they probably will incorporate that, but I don't, the intent wasn't to necessarily strike it out. But, you know, I think it's fair to, to ask about it in research. People, are they aware of it? Like, all of that. But no, that, that was not, that was not the original ten, you know, Christine, Catherine, right?
No, I think all the possibilities are still on the table, including nothing. Like, if, if a consultant came back and said, this is not a good time, there's not, you know, we're not going to be able to achieve a consensus here, it's going to, whatever the recommendation is.
Got you. Question around the funding on it, Alita, not necessarily for tonight or Mary, sorry, but, you know, where the funds are coming for that exercise? Because it's, it was taking a toll of the ballpark of like $50,000, $60,000 for this engagement. So I just, I don't need that tonight, but I would like to know where the funds comes from for that effort. So thank you.
Yeah, I think we approved 3250. And the way the proposal was, there were some musts and then there were options. You want to do this? And then so I, I'm not, and you know, you'll, you'll probably know better, Alita, but I'm not sure what options, if any, we took. But I think what we approved was 3250 tonight.
If I can add, I think.
32,250.
I think the thought was with, working with Nicole and many in the high school students and that at this point, bringing in a consultant would be in everyone's best interest. People who have done this in multiple places because, you know, there was decisions that can and cannot be made, but to help the district through the process, apparently what work was done last year with some high school students and just trying to outline things. So variety of people chimed in as terms of recommendations. And it's, it can be a very serious decision a district would make. And to have professionals weigh in to help with that decision would be helpful at this point in the juncture.
I agree. I, I will encourage us at all stages to make sure we go very wide and make sure we get all groups represented because I'm not sure that, from my outsider's perspective, I don't believe that's what's been done to date. So I would encourage us as we go through this and engage with the consultants to make sure that happens.
Right, and I think Nicole had mentioned a timeline. She doesn't want to over, you know, as far as communicating with the public yet about this. It would kind of be like overload right now with the bond. So I think she's, the idea is to kind of let us communicate about that now and be really clear about that. And then, you know, hopefully, once that sun and passes, we can like re-prioritize it and shift things in that, in that direction once, once we're moving there. Am I, am I recalling? I feel like Nicole mentioned that.
I, I did have to take a call during the meeting. I don't remember that in, in particular.
So. But I mean, like you said, I wouldn't expect any action to happen that wasn't very public, very community-engaged with the whole wide community, not just the school community. That has been acknowledged within that, you know, within the, although the communications committee is large, there's like probably 10, 12. Obviously, that's nothing when you think about the scope of the whole community, right? But there's consensus there, strong consensus, that we would need to really take a very wide approach in, in engaging, you know, not even just school families. You know, this is people's home, it's important. There's definitely an unawareness of that.
So just, my concern is the timeframe. Like, if you're waiting to really do this behind the bond, how much time? And is the end-of-the-year date a realistic date at the end of the day? And then how does that impact the contract?
Nicole seems confident that there was enough work to do before, like, in the, in the interim.
It would, it would be good to see a timeline of the plan at some point here. That would be good.
Okay.
And when, and when, and when the community is going to be engaged and how that's going to go and considering with everything else going on, where that's all at.
Okay.
Rob, is that timeline made, furnished, it was furnished to everybody? I think it was in the weekly update. There's a link to it. And then Frank, just specific on the focus group piece. The district, the proposal of the district can pick whoever we want to put in there. So you could go out, there's not like, it's not going to be just comms committee. You could put whomever you want in these amount of focus group as part of the qualitative, quantitative research. Do your point, to go broad. You could load them up with whomever you like to, you know, make sure.
Yeah, it's just a balance in the head and look at the timeline. Like, how much of this are you trying to do in parallel with the bond and to make your deadline and all that? And just realize that, that may have, you may evoke things out of the community and that, that you may not want to kick up during a bond cycle. So I understand the want to move on this, but I guess I'm, I would be cautious in how we proceed with this timeline.
Sorry, I know Melissa's been waiting for this.
No, it wasn't about this. That's why I was.
Oh, you know, I think we should probably come to you now. So, that's all. Because I'm watching you waiting.
No, I was just going to report out, we did start to have a policy committee meeting, but we had to table that discussion. Extenuating circumstances, people's schedules didn't end up working out for the most part. So it was Christine and I there, just kind of wrapping up, cleaning up some things that were on the agenda that needed to be shifted around and put back out to, some policies that needed to be put back out to a read. And just to clarify, I believe that we had already finished our answering questions around the transportation policy, right? We had come back and given the board enough feedback. We had come back and given the board enough feedback.
Student dismissal.
Student dismissal, but in, in.
And the concern about his.
In tandem with the transportation aspect being, you know, wanting to be clarified. But I think we reported back out on that and I think everyone's questions were answered. But if I'm wrong, this is a great opportunity to, you know, just put that back out there and make sure I, we were, I'm not mistaken, but I thought we had answered those questions last time when we went back to council with some of the board's concerns. But that was the only like question we were kind of, that was up in the air. But everything else, we kind of had the table. We didn't do anything because of the, you know, the attendance. And so we'll be, we didn't get to do any of the things that we talked about last board meeting that we were going to be discussing. So next, I think we have one tomorrow, right? Is it tomorrow?
Yes, you did.
Yeah, so we'll be picking back up those discussions that we had to table tomorrow.
Thank you for doing that after a lengthy meeting. It's always a lot. So it is appreciated. Speaking of lengthy meetings, thank you to all trustees who attended the Board of Education Retreat last week. Found it really helpful and we did a good job, I felt like, analyzing a bunch of different issues. Looking forward to getting the BOE handbook together and taking next steps. So thanks, everyone, for your diligence and your hard work and all of that. Anything else? Okay. I will, Mary, do we have exact? Yes. Okay. Can you tell me what?
Personnel, employment history of a particular person and property.
Okay. I will take a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the personnel matter and employment of a particular person and a property issue, property, potential property contract issue. Got it. Okay. Thank you. I need a.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Do you know where we are?